Good morning, everybody.
Today is Thursday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, nine AM. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place all your cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. Please turn them off or put them on silent.
That's about it.
There you go. So an item will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted, no action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendas. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may or not, but may not restrict comments based on viewpoint. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lion County, I'm sorry, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker Valley Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards is indicated on this or separately posted agenda. Note, this meeting may break for lunch between eleven thirty and one thirty. And we're going to try and get through, we got a full agenda today, so we'll try to get all, get all the way through everything as quickly as possible with as much diligence as possible. Roll call, if the record show that all commissioners are present in person. Indication today will be given by Mitch Forster of the Mason Valley Southern Baptist Church. Good morning, Mitch.
Let's pray together. To our Father in heaven, we acknowledge you as the almighty God, the creator of heavens and earth, and thank you, Lord, for hearing our prayer. We do pray for this session today that you will lead us with your wisdom and your guidance. We pray that all of the understanding that we need to have will be available to us. We pray that you would grant peace and unity, that we could, one mind, preserve our liberty and our freedom in this county and the state and this country. We bring these things before you in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Dave, we listen, please.
Again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, Dave. Hey, we're going to go to our first public present, first public participation. It's anticipated that public participation be held its time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. So citizens wishing to speak during the public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action afterwards, please print your name at the clerk's desk. Is there any public participation for anything that is not on the agenda today?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Leslie Somay from Smith. I thought today would be a good day just to announce that there is a grassroots group that has formed over in Smith, the citizens to protect Smith Valley. We have a website, smithvallymine.org, where you can find lots of information, and there'll be updated information as we get it. On that website is a electronic petition for those that are interested in looking more into the proposed and being drafted lands bill to essentially oppose inclusion of any lands for mining in the lands bill. There's an electronic petition. You don't need to be a registered voter of Lion County, it's certainly open to anyone who uses and wants to protect public lands. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. St. John, good morning.
Good morning, board. I am continuing my effort with election integrity. The Election Integrity Project of Nevada has alerted a number of clerks, actually all seventeen counties, that there is possibly forty thousand questionable, ineligible registrants that are on the active voting list. That is a lot, and that considerably could change the election. Eighteen thousand six hundred and sixty-seven registrants have permanently moved out of the state, yet they're still at active status in Nevada. Twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-five registrants have not voted or updated their registrations in ten-plus years. So this has been sent to all the clerks, and I would imagine that our county clerk would have this information. This is an informational thing, I know you guys are on it, and I thank you for the resolution that you recently did. But I'm just asking you to please get active and see what's going on with with our county, thank you so much.
Thank you, Elaine. Any further comment? Okay, I'm going to look at the DA here real quick. Mr. I, do we need to meet real quick before we move on to the next item, the time certain, or should we just go with as posed?
Steve, right DA, if you want, did you have questions about the agenda or?
Just the ones we discussed beforehand.
Okay, yeah, so if you wanted, I can address those questions during the board, but if you want to go ahead and approve. Have you done that? First item comes up.
Not yet, before we did that, I wanted to see if we needed to change it.
Okay. Well, I guess that the board has the authority as listed on the agenda to consider items in an order that they agree upon.
Okay, alright.
That's the authority given to the board in the agenda. But you do need to follow the agenda items.
Alrighty, thank you. Alright, uh, this time we're going to look for a motion on agenda item number five, review and adoption of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as listed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. When I call for the vote this time, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And let the record show that it passed unanimously. Alright, we have several time certens today, so we'll move on to item six, a time certain, nine AM, possible action, accept resignation from myself as the chairman of the Board of Commissioners. I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners for their support, lovely discussion and dissension that we've had at times, I think that's made for better decisions in the long run. Those of you that don't know, I have, I won my primary election in Assembly District Thirty-nine, move on to the general election, and between what's pulling me, you know, in that direction and with the responsibilities of the chairman of the board, I think it best, it'd be in the county's best interest and the residents' best interest that I go on ahead and step aside at this time. So please, I would ask that you guys accept my resignation as presented.
Does that actually have to have a motion or can we just nod our head, yes? Steve, does that actually have to have a motion to accept?
You know, out of all the questions I had, I never thought about that one.
Yes, I would recommend there'd be a motion to accept the resignation.
Okay, I will move to accept the resignation of Commissioner Ken Gray as the chairman.
I'll second it. All in favor of accepting my resignation as the chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, anybody opposed?
Okay, now Steve, I actually have a question. You should have.
You should stay up here, this is, told you this was going to go this way there, boss.
Okay, the chairman just resigned. The next item is for me to resign, but you need somebody to run the meeting. So can we move two of those items around so that?
The vice chair can preside over the.
Exactly, yeah, you can't not have somebody run the meeting.
Steve, right DA, that that would make logical sense, and that's why I mentioned at the start of the meeting, the board on the agenda has the right to consider items in any order. It would make logical sense that the vice chair run the meeting during the appointment of the chair.
Madam Vice.
Okay, so we're going to go to six C. Time certain, nine AM for possible action, elect the Board of County Commissioners Chair and to fix the term of office for the chair as required by NRS two forty-four point zero seven zero.
Madam Vice Chair, I have a motion, I would like to nominate Commissioner Byda Killer currently the vice chair and acting chair as the chair to fill the remainder of the term vacated by myself.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion as second. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, if you would, for the record, if that's where the board wants to go, then would you at least acknowledge that you're willing to give up your vice chairmanship if the vote passes?
Oh, yes, I will do that. Sorry, we skipped over that formality. Yes, if elected to the chairman's seat, I will definitely go back to six B for everyone to accept my resignation as vice chair.
I have a legal question on that.
Yeah.
Mister I.
Told you you should have just stayed up here. Either that or we got to get your chair on wheels, right?
So is that capacious? Can she be elected to a, can she hold a position as vice chair and be elected to chair before resigning as vice chair?
Steve, right DA, I think that that is not precluded, there's nothing in statute that says it is. Because she's vice chair, I think she can put her name in the, in for the chairman position.
Okay.
That would be my, my position.
I just wanted your opinion, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes three to two. Okay. So as the chairman, I'm going to go back to six B for possible action.
Karen was asking for, or I'm sorry, asking for clarification, who voted?
Oh, I apologize. The ayes were Commissioner Hawkeye, Commissioner Gray, and myself. The nays were Commissioner Henderson and Commissioner Jacobson. Okay, item six B for possible action, except Commissioner Keller's resignation as vice chair, so I move to resign myself as the vice chairman.
I'll second that.
So have a motion as second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay, that one's four to one, so we're going to have all ayes except for Commissioner Henderson was the name. Okay, so now we're going to move on to six D for possible action, elect the Board of County Commissioners Vice Chair and to fix the term of office for the vice chair as required by NRS two forty-four point zero seven zero.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Dave Hawkeye as the vice chair for the remainder of the term.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so you have Commissioner Hawkeye, Gray, and myself are the ayes, Commissioner Henderson and Commissioner Jacobson is the nays. Thank you. Okay.
I'm sure if I can make a real quick comment.
I, go ahead.
I just, again, wanted to thank everybody up here and look forward to you finishing out the year and thank you very much, and thank you to the community. It's been great. Let's play, switch crew on chairs.
That's just. Your clothes. Walk around.
Your gavel.
Oh my God, we're playing musical chairs now.
Yeah, that's all good.
Keep up, Jeff.
Jeff, if you have another symbol, I'll move to the right.
Got some music, we'll play musical chairs. Thank you.
Rolling into those bleeding inside seat.
Yeah, I'm all confused, where everybody's at now.
Name tags corrective?
I don't. Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make a quick comment to say thank you to this board who has had faith in me in the past as being the chair, had faith in me being the vice chair, and for the portions of this board that has faith in me in finishing this year out. And so I thank you very much. As you all know, as in, as of January, I will be stepping down, so you won't have to deal with me up here anymore. So, but again, thank you, and it's been a pleasure to serve this board. So we're going to move on now to six E for presentation only, a presentation from Hud Bay Minerals for future mining in South. Oh, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself, thank you very much. Changing seats there, got me a little ahead of myself. Okay, I'm going to go to presentation of awards and a recognition of accomplishments, Jeff, do we have anything?
Not today, ma'am.
Okay, then I'm going to go to Commissioner Comments and start with Commissioner Henderson.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. So I attended the Silver City Advisory Board Tuesday night, not too much going on there. They had an agreement with the Nevada Offroad Association, get some signage for OHV traffic through to their, their community. Something got crossways and those signs got sent to another community, so they're still looking for, for signs, and we will continue to work with that. I also attended the Campo meeting on August tenth. Interesting meeting, the, the presentation by NDOT regarding the US fifty corridor is scheduled for the September fourteenth meeting. I would like to point out during, during the Campo meeting, yeah, they, they authorized some expenditures, but they received a million dollars in congression designated, designated spending for the twenty twenty-one Western Nevada Safe Road School, vulnerable user pedestrian safety instruction program. They also got a hundred, one point five million in congressional delegated spending money for the twenty twenty-two Safe Road School Program, and two million dollars of congressionally designated spending appropriations for an East William Street overhead utility underground project. At the July meeting, they got, they also allocated one point one million of congressionally dedicated funding for traffic signal APR away. The point of all this is there's federal money out there, we're not getting our share, we need to do better. That's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Gray.
I have nothing to say, I'll send my comments for them, thank you.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Attended Fernstock. Special thanks to Cody Wagner and Friendly Community Foundation Board for all their hard work. Oh, thank you. You could just throw something at me too. Thank you, Madam Chair, attended Fernstock, thank you, Cody Wagner, Friendly Community Foundation Board, and all that donated and attended, great organization benefiting, obviously, the Friendly Community Center, they're trying to continue to raise money. And it was well attended and, and a wonderful evening. Attended the City of Friendly Council Meeting, albeit by Zoom last night, the Zoom was not working very well. But there were a lot of items discussed with importance to everything from the canal project that's getting ramroded through to the grant, I know they qualified for, I believe, Mr. Henderson, Commissioner Henderson alluded to, money's out there, but I think they just qualified for a twenty-five million dollar grant to help with some infrastructure there. And on a side note, my daughter has her first college games today, so I'm looking forward to hearing how she does in volleyball. With that, I'm Madam Chair, I'm good.
Hey, Commissioner Hawkeye.
Thank you, Madam Chair, the trailer out in Wilson Canyon that sat there for three months permanently camping, I would imagine, I want to thank Sheriff Honeywell for working that issue and getting the individual to leave, I'm not sure where he was dumping his tanks, I have a feeling it was dumping them in the river. We do have a continuing problem out in Wilson Canyon for people camping for extended periods of time. And I'm all for recreation, but unfortunately, a lot of the constituents that are going through that area that live in Mason Valley, Smith Valley, Lion County, and other parts of Nevada are finding that the disrespect for our property out there is significant. The people aren't digging a hole if they have to go to the bathroom, and I hate to be that way. But it's pretty significant, I've been sent a lot of pictures of things that are not right. And I'm very happy that Sheriff Honeywell got ahold of the National Forest since they own the River Quarter. NDOT Road owns the road, and BLM Run Road owns the other side of the road. So you've got three agencies that you have to deal with, and he finally cut through the red tape and got that done, I very much appreciate that. So I will leave it at that, when he said, thank you very much.
And I don't have anything at this time, so County Manager Page, please.
Good morning, Jeff Page, County Manager, for the record. Congratulations or condolences to the chair and vice chair. Few things to report on for the board. So as you remember, last board meeting, you provided direction to me to work with a variety of stakeholders to take a look at the feasibility of a hospital. The first thing we did following Monday, reached out to Joan Hall within the Better Rule Hospital Providers. She and her staff are putting together a variety of data that we need to make some determinations initially as to what it is that will need is in Central Lion County. So they're getting that together, I anticipate it will be about another three to four weeks before we have all that compiled, and then they will need to sit down and explain to me what all of that, me, because I don't speak medical ease. But order to that process, two of a number of several regional hospitals have already reached out to me for meetings, and staff is scheduling those, those folks. And then we'll begin scheduling community discussions with the advisory boards of Central Lion County Corridor, I've already reached out to Silver Springs, Dayton, and Mount House for September, and then I'll do Silver City Stagecoach in October, and get their input, get their thought processes, and move forward from there. We'll also be reaching out to Silver, to the Silver Springs Hospital District, and it has some coverage to them as well, so we're trying to get this thing ball moving and get it moving in the right direction. So we've been doing some research on a variety of things, not necessarily because we wanted to, but because situations came up. So we're looking at bringing back to the board later this year, some ordinance updates of one point eleven, Division Records Management was written back in nineteen eighty-one, eighty-two, prior to having a county manager. So there's things in there like part of the committee is the administrative assistant to the Board of County Commissioners, that position no longer exists, they created a county manager position, and a few other things in order to clean up and then get it in line with what NRS two three nine requires for records manager, recognition, and public records requests. We recently had another application for outdoor festival, we had one last year in, for the same thing during date by days, using our Dayton Event Center. But we found some challenges with the current code, as an example, requires a county engineer to sign off, this code was written nineteen seventy-three. So in those days, it was the county engineer Larry Warner and Stan Smart, the DA, who pretty much put all this together. And so we need to make some changes just to update those codes and those processes, we're probably going to wind and make in the majority of it similar to what we do with Title Fifteen, administrative review and not come to the board, because under two thirty-nine C, many of the plans they have for outdoor festival permit are not public information pursuant to the NRS two thirty-nine C, so you can't have the board approve something that the public can't see. So we're working through that process now, we'll open the DA's office to verify that we're okay. We've had some challenges in the past dealing with carnivals and circuses, had a conversation with the neighboring county the other day, wanting to know what we did, and they had some codes in place, so we're going to work together as a quad county region and see if we can get some similar language in our codes and addressing how we address carnivals and circuses. So when you have a carnival show up and half the nuts and bolts are missing on the rights, we have some authority to say, hey, you got to fix that for the people, put people on it. Because right now, we don't, we haven't the authority on those kinds, so we're working through that. And then based upon recent changes in NRS four one four, four one four A, we'll be making some changes to the emergency management code. So just give me a heads up, those things are coming down the path, nothing should be too controversial, just getting us up to par where we need to be. We had a commissioner one time years ago that said that we should have somebody on staff who had been to law school but isn't a practicing attorney to determine what we're, what we're doing is legal and make sure that we're not committing acts of omission by not doing things we're supposed to be doing, and these are just little things that we find during there that need to be updated from a periodic basis, so no harm, no foul, we're just trying to get things cleaned up. Get this into the twenty-first century and out of nineteen seventy-three. A lot of stuff going on, Erin, who's not here today, or this morning, she's in training, but we've had a rash of public requests for information. So there's a difference between a public request for information and a FOIA request. FOIA request is a federal law that addresses federal issues. Under NRS two thirty-nine discusses how we deal with those public records requests and information. Some of them are routine, everyday stuff, you know, hey, can I have a copy of the minutes of the board, yeah, go, go to our website, I don't have access to the website. Okay, how about you? Yeah, I can do it, so we sent it to them, no big deal. Some of it is very labor intensive, we had a lot of stuff during election integrity issues from a variety of media sources. And it takes time to go through emails as an example and verify that what's in the email is public information or not public information. So we are working, Josh, I, Steve, Ryan, and Erin, we decided it's Erin's responsibility. We are working on putting together a policy to come to the board to address those issues and address part of it in the county code that I just talked about. Part of this conversation was put together after we had a presentation by the Nevada Clerk's Association on record retention and public information requests. That was done by the Nevada Clerk's Association, Julie Torres out of the city of Sparks lives in Friendly, she was a presenter, did a phenomenal job, good information. But there were some challenges there because she's a city clerk, and so city clerk has, there's only one other elected position in the city of Sparks, that's the city attorney, everybody else is appointed, so it's they can tell what law enforcement and all the other, like, what would be elected things in the county, how to do it, we don't have that luxury in the county government, so forward through that process. I'm attended yesterday's NND A General Board Meeting, not much to speak on there, other than they are putting together a group of all four county or all five county community development directors to sit down To sit down and talk about where each county is. What processes do we have that are similar? What are dissimilar? And if we try to make things a little more. Simple to be used through the five county region that N N D covers. And so we'll see what that looks like in the future. Don't forget that starting today, fair rodeo begins. And so today through Sunday, I'm out to fairgrounds. The all kinds of events and things going on, so I want to talk about. Just give them a plug for the hard work that the Fair Board does to put that event on every year. Parades on Saturday. You can, if you haven't. Gotten. So paperwork to be in the parade. My understanding, you still can. So if you want to be in the parade Saturday. We discovered, as I said before, about the outdoor festival permit application process, and we're probably. Probably going to move that from the clerk to community development, because it's very similar process to what we do with a variety of development applications. And make it simple for people to come and get their thing. Be done at the counter if they have all their paperwork in line and can speed that process up for them. And get it moved quicker. So we'll be seeing some changes to that. Tuesday night, was it? Yeah, Tuesday night, Andrew and I had the great pleasure of going to Silver Springs. To meet with a variety of residents who were notified by Carson Water Sub Conservancy District by mail of the meeting to discuss whether they're going to be remaining in the floodplain or coming out of it. Fortunately for us, all the people that were coming out of the floodplain, many of them showed up. The seventeen people were being moved in, didn't show up. So it was a very positive. We did have, as you saw in email I sent you, we did have one disgruntled person who had nothing to do with the floodplain. I mean, I'm sure Commissioner Keller remembers a guy. He was here about ten, eleven years ago with the same complaint, and he was. Still as passionate about the issue today as he was. I'll be gone in September for a few days, going to the International City County Managers Association Conference. Don't forget, if you haven't signed up for the Naco Conference of Virginia City, let me do so. If you plan on staying in Virginia City, take your camper. There are no hotel rooms left. Aaron informed me that there's a, I think, a report in your packet. All but one of the cabs are compliant now, so we're moving through that process, getting it moving forward. Met with Shayla. This week as a public health, public behavioral health executive committee, as you may not know. The former public health or behavioral health representative for the. Region Regional Committee, Jessica Flood has resigned and gone to other things. We have a new person. I cannot remember her name, she's a blankie right now. But we were introduced. Some good things coming down the pipe. Some very interesting discussions and as soon as we get a firm date for the next Board of Health meeting, you'll be getting briefed by those folks into what's going on. The last but not least, based upon a number of phone calls we've received over the last several months, we're probably going to take a look at. Creating some type of a. If you remember the old days of the Citizens Law Enforcement Academy. We're looking at doing something similar in regards to county operations. We'll do it in a centralized location, but also allow people to participate by Zoom. So I can let people know once and for all, we do not govern the school district or the fire district. Or the G I D, stagecoach, or any of those types, right? And then, and they get people to understand what county government does and doesn't do. So we are working on right now, putting together some curriculum as to what that would look like. Make it four or five. Nights. Wednesday night at six thirty. And then we'll put it on our YouTube site as well. People can participate. We'll do a centralized location, do it in Silver Springs. People come to Silver Springs where they can zoom in and do something similar, so we can get some information out. I'm just utterly amazed at the. The views that people have of county government can do. Contrary to popular belief, not everybody who's moved to Lion County is from California. We have a great number of people who've moved here from the East Coast, where East Coast counties have home rule. And so they assume that you folks are the final decision makers, and you can do whatever you want to do, whenever you want to do it. And when I explain to them, that's not Nevada. We're a political subdivision of state in Nevada. We do what state legislature allows us to do. Sometimes we push the envelope, but that's all we can do. They're very shocked to hear that, because where they came from. The county government was the. Almighty, they could do whatever they wanted to. They controlled cities, they controlled school districts, they controlled everything within the county. And that's just not the case in Nevada. So we're looking at putting some of that together. We have more information. We'll be getting out to you folks. I do, once we get this going, I strongly urge board members who want to participate, please do. I think it's very important that the community at large sees that what we do and that what the board does specifically, what they can and can't. That. Many questions or concerns?
Any questions for Jim? Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Forget my buzzer this morning. Couple of things. First of all, thank you, Mr. Page, covered a lot of stuff. First thing with the carnivals and. The rides. By having authority, does that mean we have more responsibility if something goes south with their? I was. I don't like seeing. A Ferris wheel or a tilt-a-whirl on I eighty. I'd rather see them in like shields permanently there. So does that mean we have more responsibility if we have? If we take on more authority?
I argue that we already have that responsibility. Otherwise, the state legislature would not given us authority to create codes to address this. So without having something in black and white, it's how we handle that. And it can be something very generic as far as what. What the building inspector will do in conjunction with the fire protection district that's involved. Because we had this problem with Commissioner Keller Potter remembers about. Eight to ten years ago, we had a carnival just show up in Dayton, show up on the property next to our park, nobody knew anything about it. It was, it was a cluster. It was horrid. And we finally went in without any authority and shut the guy down, red tagged him. He filed all kinds of complaints and eventually they got their stuff fixed. They had their little carnival and they moved on. So we're just trying to get it set up so that we're legal in saying, hey, you got to fix this problem for me. We have a carnival out here at the fairgrounds right now. I'm assuming based upon what I've heard, that it's everything's intact and in good operation, but at least having the authority to say yes, yes or no, before they start putting people on life and something good, sure.
Right. And then, Madam Chair, if I may. This, the next one is on those outdoor events. This is maybe something for the waste management portion of our meeting, maybe not, I don't know, but. So outdoor events, are they allowed to find their own? Portable restrooms and trash service, or is that going to be locked up in the franchise?
Well, it depends what the franchise says. So currently, under the existing franchise, they have to go with whoever the franchisee is. Bathrooms, porta potties, you can't franchise toilets, so you can get them free.
We can mandate though, how many they have to have or whatever.
They're state law as well as. Got code, guide, guide codes and address, I guess.
So if there's a special event, they have to go with a certain approved vendor. They can't go with something that might help them save some money and and make a little bit more for whatever organization it is. So.
We're not going to tell them they have to go with vacuum toilet company. They can pick who they want for sanitary nets. Right now, under a current franchise agreement, they have to go with whoever the franchisee is to provide trash.
All right, thank you. That's all I had, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for? County Manager. All right, well, now I can back up and go to our train certain. For nine thirty a.m., item sixty, presentation only, a presentation from Hud Bay Minerals for future mining in South Lion County.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Matt Bingham with Hud Bay Minerals. Thank you for inviting us here today to talk about our Mason Project. First of all, a quick legal disclaimer. Hud Bay is a public company. Our shares are traded on stock exchanges, so. We need to just make sure everyone understands that we cannot predict the future. So to the extent that we talk about future things here today. Please don't buy or sell Hud Bay stock based on that. We'd love you to all buy Hud Bay shares, but understand we cannot predict the future. The Mason Project team, most of us are here today. I'm Matt Bingham. I'm Director of Legal and Public Affairs. With me is Jerry Bustamante, who is our Manager of Community Relations. Jerry and I are based in Tucson. Most of our time is spent on our Arizona project, but we've been coming up here to this area several times a year for a few years now. But it's our first time presenting to this board. Also with us today is Shantay Masard. Shantay was brought on just a few weeks ago to lead our stakeholder engagement efforts on the Mason Project. So she will not be presenting today, but in the future, you're going to see her face a lot more. She's the one that's going to be based here and leading our efforts going forward. One of our local employees is Jaime Alvera. He's not here today. But he is a local, lives here in Yarrington. I believe he's lived here his whole life. And he works out of our office up on on the north side of town. A little bit of background on Hud Bay. The main message here, as you can see, is Hud Bay is a. Company that's been discovering, building, operating, and importantly, closing mines successfully for over a hundred years. Most of Hud Bay's history is in Manitoba in Canada. But we also now have operations and projects in the Americas. We have operated mines in Manitoba and in Peru. And you can see by the different colors here. The stage of the various projects. So our project in Arizona. Which is shown here in green is considered a development project, which means it's it's much further along in the process than an exploration project. The Mason Project, you can see here, we consider an exploration project. And the important point here is that it is one project in our pipeline. We have exploration projects in Canada, Peru, Chile. And. You know, the the stage in which or the the rate at which these projects get moved forward depends on a lot of issues external, but also internal of which projects look like the best projects at the time. So we have, Jerry's going to talk about this a little later, but one of the key messages here is, I know everyone has a lot of questions. I know Commissioner Hawke, that you were at the meeting in Smith Valley in March. We will answer every question that we get from this commission or from the community. But we don't necessarily have those answers today. This project is in the very early stages. We're still trying to understand what's in the ground. And a lot of the studies that are going to be done as part of permitting and feasibility studies and design. Those have just not been done yet. So we're happy, we'll answer your questions to the best that we can, but please understand a lot of the details about the project are just, they haven't been developed yet. A quick slide here on Hud Bay's philosophy as far as community relations. It is a key principle of Hud Bay that we want the communities where we operate to benefit from our presence. And the only way for that to happen is if the benefits of our operation outweigh the impacts. And we understand there are impacts. But we don't want to operate in areas where the community doesn't want us. And the only way to do that is to make sure that the community sees the benefits from our operation. We are here this week to present to the board, but we're also involved with the fair. We sponsored the fair. We're going to be attending a lot of the fair events. And in the few years that we've owned this project. We've made numerous donations, sponsorships, and also some scholarships in the community, and those will only increase as the project advances through the development process. So some, some details about the project itself.
The Mason Project is approximately forty-six miles southeast of Reno and five miles west of Yarrington. When planning the layout of a mine, many considerations are taken into account, including geological, environmental, cultural, and financial factors. The ultimate goal is to design a project that is financially feasible, safe for workers and neighbors, and minimizes impacts on the environment and cultural resources. Consulting key stakeholders early and often is essential to ensuring that all concerns and interests are fully understood and considered. In the design and permitting processes, long before any construction activities begin. Input from the tribes at this stage can be used in designing the mine layout, so that important cultural sites are protected and significant conflicts can be avoided in the latter stages. In general, an open pit copper mine consists of five key components. The open pit. Waste rock storage facilities. A processing plant. A tailings management facility. And support infrastructure like roads and power lines. In terms of location, the open pit is the one part of a mine that cannot be moved. It must be located where the deposit was formed geologically. The pit will develop over time as waste rock and valuable ore are excavated. It is a highly engineered feature designed to maximize extraction while ensuring slope stability to prevent failure and protect workers and equipment. The waste rock storage facility is usually located adjacent to the pit to more easily facilitate the removal of dirt and rock. It can be moved to different locations based on results and recommendations from cultural and environmental studies and tribal and community engagement. However, the ideal waste rock storage facility has a compact footprint and is located as close to the open pit as possible. The shorter distance means fewer haul trucks and less miles driven. This makes sense economically, but also has environmental benefits like reducing fuel consumption and dust emissions. The rocks and other materials placed in a waste rock facility do not have minerals in them that can be processed. They are often saved and used during the reclamation process. The milling and processing facilities are where ore is crushed and ground to the consistency of sand and then sorted by mineral content using water and chemistry. The end product of the milling and processing is copper concentrate, which is then shipped offsite for further processing. The location of these facilities is flexible based upon the location of cultural resources as well as environmental considerations. However, construction of a processing plant requires excavation for foundations, which involves the possibility of encountering buried features that were not visible on the surface. The leftover material from the ore processing is called tailings. Tailings are piped from the processing plant to the tailing management facility for permanent storage. Ideally, the tailings facility is located at a lower elevation than the processing plant, in a valley or depression, to minimize the energy needed to move them. The tailings facility itself is designed to cover the smallest area possible and is lined with an engineered barrier to prevent any leakage. Environmental considerations for its location include shortest haul distance for rock to build the buttresses and to cover the least amount of area possible. Over time, the dirt in the tailings will settle to the bottom and water will rise to the top. The water from the tailings facility can be pumped out and reused in the processing plant, decreasing a mine's water consumption. Modern mining begins with the end in mind. This means that we plan for the closure and rehabilitation of the land before the first shovel is put in the ground. Not only that, we are required by law to purchase a bond to cover the costs of reclamation. This bond must be in place prior to any ground disturbing activities and ensures the reclamation occurs regardless of what happens with the operation of the mining company. Before, during, and after mining is complete, we are taking into consideration the best way to operate in a sustainable manner, and that protects the environment. Through incorporating local and traditional knowledge into our planning from the beginning, we can restore the land in a way that also brings benefits to the local community. The Mason Project is a unique project that through collaboration with local stakeholders, combined with industry-leading technology. Can sustainably provide the copper required to meet the demand of our high-tech and green energy future.
Okay, so that's just very high-level information about the project, but as I said, we'll, we'll share a lot more detail today or as it becomes available. So this is the land position of our project. So this is the land position of our project. This is not the footprint of the project. This is our land position. So you can see the city of Yarrington.
You can't see it on the screen.
So you see the city of Yarrington there in the middle. To the left, the black outline is our project footprint. The light purple areas are private land that we hold within there. And as you can see, most of the area is BLM land, the yellow area where we hold unpatented mining claims. So the project eventually will be located, most likely, within this footprint, but it will not disturb this entire footprint. It'll be some subset within there where the project is located. And it's important to mention that as federal public land, the federal agencies do have a multiple-use mandate. And so we have mining claims, but that doesn't mean that we can or would exclude other people from the area until there's an actual need for that. So this is our, the outline of our mining claims. But right now, the land is almost entirely open for other uses like recreation. This is a little detail about, about mining claims. I'm not sure how familiar the commission is with mining claims. But as I mentioned, BLM manages land for multiple uses, including commercial, like mining, also recreational and conservation. There are areas that are designated for conservation uses, areas with particularly important ecological values. But other areas that don't have that kind of special designation or a withdrawal for mining location are open for staking mining claims and eventually a permitted, available for mining. So the total land position is about 34,000 acres. A little over 2,000 are patented mining claims, which are now private land. And then the rest of it is unpatented mining claims on BLM. So some highlights here of a study that we released last year.
I was thinking last night.
Okay, so just some highlights here of a study we released last year. This is the most information that we've developed on the Mason Project. It's called the Preliminary Economic Assessment. It's the first in a series of studies that we will do as, as we get more information and advance through the development process. So this was released April of last year. There's a press release on our website with a lot more detail, but some of the key points, as you can see here, the project as we currently envision it would be a 27-year operation. And that's obviously, from the point we start operating, there's still a lot of work, years, if not a decade or more of work to do to get to that point with the permitting and the engineering. It would operate for 27 years. It would cost about $2 billion to build it. So that would be spent over a two- to three-year construction period before operations start. The plan is 120,000 tons per day concentrator. As you saw in the video, the concentrator grinds up the ore and then sorts it out into concentrate and ore tailings. And based on what we know right now, Mason would be the third-largest copper mine in the U.S. So it's a very large, significant deposit. And based on what we know right now, it looks like an economically viable deposit. And we're going to continue studying it, both the economics and the environmental impacts and the community input as we advance through the process. We just have one slide here on water. I know water is a huge issue here. We, we get asked about water by essentially everyone we talk to. As I was talking about before, we don't have all the answers on water. But here's what we can tell you. Any water that we use in that basin is going to have to come from an existing permit, an existing use. So we're not going to be able to get new water rights in that basin. We, we do have an option agreement with the ranchland that is closest to the project. I flip back a little bit. So, right, you see the light blue area on the left is the alkali lake. Right above that is some private land that's in cultivation. We have an option agreement for that land, which includes about 8,000 acre-feet of irrigation water rights. So we do have an agreement for that. And they are existing rights. They're being used. But it's possible that we would need more than that. And so we would have to acquire those rights from other holders in, in, you know, willingly negotiated agreements, and then that would have to be approved by the state engineer. I think everyone in here probably understands that the state engineer has the ability to regulate all uses of water in the state and to approve changes in uses or changes in place of use. And so, and that's a process whether it is availability or an opportunity for public input. And so that process would have to be completed before we're able to transfer any water rights up to the mine site. And on the right side, our quality. As the commission, I'm sure, understands, under current federal regulation and state regulation, any mine before it would be permitted would have to study and model and demonstrate that it would not cause water quality issues. And then that would be monitored under a permit going forward. So it wouldn't just be hoping that things go well. It would be monitored and reported to the state so that if there were any issues, it would be identified early and could be addressed. Just emphasize again, we understand water is a huge issue. And we're, we're working on a plan that hopefully will have a block community support. So Jerry is going to cover the last half, and then we'll be willing to take any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Good morning, Matt, the Chair, members of the commission. It's good to see you all. Good to be here in here. Next thing I want to talk about is, in addition to water, we have been fielding many questions and receiving comments from the public, which, which we greatly appreciate. We respond to everything. And a lot of the questions, in addition to water, we have been receiving is with respect to the mine access, where the primary access roads and egresses from the mines are going to be, also other local impacts such as noise, traffic, and air quality. And these are questions that we are eager to provide answers for. And, and those will come in due time, like, like Matt mentioned earlier. You know, that's one of our challenges right now as, as we continue to socialize this, this project and as, as we continue our listening tour in the community. We know that these are questions that, that need to be answered. And I wanted to share this slide right here because it, it shares where we are in the development process of, of the Mason Project. And as you can see, these are all significant milestones that, that have to be achieved. You know, all the pre-planning, the exploration, fully understanding the mineralization of the deposits, then going into feasibility studies, initiating permits, receiving permits, going into construction. All of those are really, really important. Right now, the area that is circled right there, pre-planning and community and tribal engagement, that is where we are right now. That is where we are as we are introducing ourselves to the community. As, as we are sharing with the community, the idea that we have for a mine that we want to be, that we want to build here. But a big part of the work that still needs to be done is the exploration. We need to arrive at a level of confidence where we know exactly what it is that we're working with. We understand the mineralization of the deposit. And then areas outside the deposit where we're going to have ancillary facilities, there's a lot of geotechnical studies that need to be done as well. So that's kind of where our focus is right now, and also with regards to our continued outreach. But once we start working on those next three key milestones, we're going to do a lot of feasibility studies. We're going to do a lot of technical studies. Then we're going to initiate the permitting process. And that is when a lot of these studies are going to take place. And during this process, as we are out working on securing permits, there will be plenty of opportunity for the public to provide input to these agencies, to also, to also express their concerns. And at the same time, we also know that there are opportunities that can be taken advantage of. A lot of the feedback that we have received, it's, it's been both mixed. There are some folks that are clearly concerned about what we're doing. We certainly understand that. But at the same time, we've been pleased to receive positive feedback from members of the community that want to learn more, but are open to learning more and are exciting. They're excited about the idea of what we may potentially bring. So it's a little bit of both. But as we get through this process right here, that is when we will arrive at a point where we can provide those difficult answers, the answers to difficult questions that we don't have just now. So, you know, we, we ask the, the community for patience in the meantime as we go through this process, but all of those, all of those concerns will be answered in due time. But very, very important for everyone to understand that right now, we are very much in the early stages of this process right here. So if we were to kind of look a little bit forward, and we talked about the, you know, the economic opportunities. This is a, you know, this is, these numbers right here are based on similar projects that are already in operation. At some point, we will do a comprehensive economic study that will provide us with more detailed information. But, you know, we're looking at somewhere from one and a half million, one and a half billion to $2 billion capital investment in developing the Mason Project. And keep in mind, folks, these are outside dollars that are coming into your community. When we talk about growing that economic pie and growing those economic opportunities, it's, it's not being done with taxpayer dollars. It's being done with money that's coming outside of your community to grow that economic pie. In terms of, over the life of the mine, wages, everything that we're going to buy, you know, we're looking at over $10 billion is what we could potentially spend. And then on the jobs front, for a mine this size, we expect that we would directly employ somewhere in the neighborhood of 500 to 600 direct employees. And many of you here are familiar with how mining works. We're highly dependent on that supply chain to keep our mines up and running. So mines usually support anywhere from four to six jobs for every direct job that they have. So a project like this can indirectly support an additional 3,000 jobs. And, and please, you know, let, let me acknowledge, when we talk about numbers like this, especially 500 employees, right from the start when we arrived, the number one issue that came up is how are you going to handle housing? We hear you. We've heard the community. It is something that we talk about as a group. And we don't know what that answer is right now. We don't know what that answer is. We know it is going to be a challenge. I think there's a lot of lessons that can be learned from the development of Pumpkin Hollow. There's a lot of things that they did well in the development of the project. And at the same time, we've heard that it also exposed some opportunities where we can do things better. But we believe the solution to that, it's not going to come directly from us. That's going to come from working with the community, working with different stakeholder groups, working with members of the private sector that do understand housing, and start working on that as soon as we can to alleviate the impact that that will bring. So I just wanted to, to acknowledge that because we've been hearing about that since, since the day that we arrived. Now, some of the things that, you know, we are excited about with a project like this, you know, Matt said that the Mason Project has the potential to be the third-largest copper-producing project in the U.S. And for us as a nation, that's, that's significant. You know, we continue to move towards a green economy. And having a project such as this, it's going to help us, it's going to help us achieve some of our net goals that we have as a, as a nation. It's going to help us work towards decarbonization, towards electrification. This is, this is where we're going as, as a, as a nation. And I, I hear this all the time. I've got teenage kids. And when I talk to my kids, and they talk about the life that they want, you know, they're talking about electric vehicles, you know, they're talking about the reduction of greenhouse gases. Those are our future leaders. But in order to achieve those things, we need to start developing mines where we can produce the copper that we need to support decarbonization. The other thing as well is this project will allow us to increase our independence from foreign sources for the minerals that we need. Right now, there is an imbalance. Right now, we import the large majority of minerals that we need from foreign countries to build and to produce what we're doing here in this country. And some of these, some of these nations are nations are not, that are not exactly friendly to us. So a project like this gives us the opportunity to reduce our domestic supply on foreign copper that we need. So in terms of what we are doing right now, okay, a few things that I wanted to point out is, you know, we do have some, all of our private lands that we have, you know, we're constantly monitoring those lands. We deal with illegal. It's our land. We're going to be a good neighbor, and, and we're going to keep things clean. We also have some historic mining hazards that are out there. Many of you, I'm sure, are familiar, you know, where they are. It's been the community's playground for some time. So we, we've worked to secure those for the, for the sake of the public safety. We'll continue to do that. Exploration, that's, that's still very much where we are. We have another exploration program that, that we are planning. It'll likely happen beginning of next year, but that's still a big part of what we need to do. Hiring, we need some help. Matt mentioned earlier that we now have someone here, Shantay. She will be moving here to Yarrington. She'll be living here. So we're really excited to have someone that can lead the project that's going to be here, that you will see, that can answer these questions. That's going to be tremendously, you know, helpful for us. And, and again, our continual local outreach is one of the things that we'll continue to do. We, we certainly have an interest in the development of, of a land build. And we will be happy to provide any support we can to help advance that as well. Now, with regards to community outreach, just wanted to share what we have done. When, when we visited Smith Valley in, in March, and, and we learned a lot. We were really glad that we went there. We met a lot of neighbors. We spoke for a long time. We answered a lot of hard questions. But that is exactly, it allowed us to understood, understand what the concerns and what the interests of the community is. And one of the things that we walked away with, collectively, people said, we need more information. We want more information. So we heard that loud and clear. So, so we've done, we've done a few things. First thing we did is, is we developed a new micro website exclusively for the Mason Project. And it can be found at masonprojectnb.com. And what that site does is give a high-level overview of what the project is. It has maps out there. This interactive video that you saw today in terms of how we're going to build it, it's included there. It also allows visitors to sign up to receive quarterly updates from us via email. And, you know, we've taken all the frequently asked questions that we've been receiving over the months, and we answer those questions out there. And more importantly, we provide information on how we can be contacted. You know, one of the things that we feel very strongly about is we want to hear from everyone. We want to be accessible. We will be responsive. We understand that to earn trust, trust is not given. Trust needs to be earned, and it is earned over a long period of time. And one of the best ways to do that is to be available and to answer those questions and to be forthcoming with information and to share that information. You know, we want the public to be accurately informed. A lot of times, projects like this, misinformation can, can run wild. Sometimes it comes from speculation. Sometimes it comes from misinformation that's purposely put out there to deceive the public. But fortunately, if the public wants to hear from us, they can hear from us because we will be available, we'll be accessible. We'll, we'll talk to a group of two, to the largest group that's willing to gather. We're happy to do that. But that's, that's, that's the best we can do in the meantime, given where we are in the project. And then finally, the last slide is. And then finally, the last slide is, is we believe we can build a great mine by, by working together with the community. One of the things that I talked about earlier is, is the housing. We don't have the full solution. But I think by working together, learning from past experiences, we can do that. So we're eager to work together. We want to understand people's concerns. We want to address those concerns because we really do believe that this could be a net benefit for everyone involved. That's our goal as, as a company. So at this time, we'll be happy to answer any questions, Madam Chair and members of the commission that, that you all have.
Hey, Commissioner Jacobson, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation today, gentlemen, and I guess, ma'am, she probably helped put it all together for you guys, huh? I was at the March meeting as well, and a lot of the same information to a great extent, I feel like was presented there, but just to, I guess, get some clarification and or have it out there. It seems like at that meeting, you mentioned that once your allocation of water runs out, you, you need to stop. You stop operations. Is that correct?
I'm not sure exactly what common you're referring to, but every water right in Nevada is restricted to a certain amount of use. So maybe the comment you're referring to is we don't know how much water we're going to need yet because we don't know how much is available. So there are different technologies and different designs that use different amounts of water. So it's possible that if there's not water available, that that could be a determining factor in the project as it's actually built.
Okay. And then you showed the picture of where the water rights that you purchased are coming from. How do you get, how, what's your plan to get the water to the mine? Is there a pipeline coming in? Is it from the ground?
Well, it's all groundwater now.
Okay, it's all groundwater. It's none, it's no, it's not from like.
There's no surface water.
Okay.
It's all, it's all primary groundwater rights.
So you can just take that then from your mindset?
Yeah. So the question would be, is that could we have good wells at the mine site? If so, that would be the best way to do it is to change the points of diversion up to the mine site. But we don't know yet if we can develop good wells up there. So in that case, we could have to pipe it up from the agricultural area.
All right. And then with copper, I mean, is copper the only thing you're going to be going after? You're going to separate other minerals as you're going through as well?
No, copper is the main one, but there's also lithium, gold and silver.
All right on.
Much, much smaller quantities.
Right. And with copper, do you need a smelter?
It depends on the process. So the type of copper we have here, the normal way to process it is concentrated into a concentrate like we showed, and then yes, it has to be shipped somewhere to be smelted.
And then what was the routes again for getting that in and out and, and labor force in and out? What, where are you coming through?
We don't, we don't know that yet. We don't even know where the main access to the mine will be. We're, like we said, we're just not there yet.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks for the presentation. And Commissioner Jacobson, you covered a lot of the questions I had. Few others, though, would be from part of your presentations in the past, you've said that you may be able to send this concentrate to Utah, but most likely it's going to go to China or Mexico?
So there is, there's no smelting capacity available in the U.S. So typically, any new sources of concentrate have to send it overseas. China is a possibility. I don't think Mexico is a possibility. There are also smelters in other parts of Asia and in Europe. We haven't got there with this project, but we recently announced a new project in Arizona where we're actually going to be able to produce finished copper on site from this sulfide material, the same kind of material we have in Mason. So it's possible we could, you know, depending on how it goes in Arizona, we may also have excess capacity in Arizona to, to take concentrate and refine it there into finished copper. But the traditional approach with a new sulfide concentrator is the concentrate has to be sent to some other country to be smelted because there is no capacity in the U.S. for smelting. Let me add to that, Madam Chair, Commissioner Hawke Day. One of the questions that came up a few times that we've received is, do we intend to build a smelter? And the answer is no. We're not in the smelting business. The operation of a smelter is, is a very, very different discipline than, than it is mining. And like, like Matt mentioned, it's, it's really hard to know where the copper concentrate that we'll develop here is going to go because we don't know where the smelter capacity will exist six months from now, let alone many years from now. But once we get closer, we will know. And we'll also know which, which, which routes we will be, we will be transporting copper concentrates out of the site. Now, it would be wonderful if we can, if we can transport that to, to the mine that we have in Arizona. Because then we're going to be producing finished copper that we're going to sell exclusively to the mess of copper users here in the United States. But again, that, that will be, we'll know that in due time.
You're talking about thirty thousand acres that you would like to get control of from BLM. That's a significant amount of land in northern Smith Valley. When I asked a question of one of your people, the last time we discussed this, I was told that you planned on putting a fence from the northeast corner of Smith Valley to the northwest corner, all the way across the top to block off any area that you might gain under your control. Of course, I don't feel that's acceptable blocking off that amount of land, but that was told to me specifically by a person at the last tour.
I don't know where that came from, but no, that's, that's not our intent. And frankly, that would not be allowed by the BLM. We can't just fence off federal land. So the land that we're interested in trying to acquire, our total land package is thirty something thousand acres, but the area that we are interested in acquiring is more like eighteen thousand. That's still a lot. But we can't fence off any federal land unless we had approval from the Land Management Agency to do that. And that requires going through the entire permitting process, the plan of operation and an ECO review, if it is federal land. So that would be literally a decade in the future. And, and I would say the only area that would be fenced off is what needs to be fenced off for public safety to keep people out of the mine site. And again, it would be approved by the by the BLM. And once the operation is done, it would all have to be removed and reclaimed and reopened to publics.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson, did you have questions?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Just, just a couple of comments. I'm excited about your project. Your mining is very important, both to the state and the country. I'm a little concerned about sending the concentrate overseas, but that's not under your control right now. But I, I know that, you know, a lot of people don't know mining is actually what brought me to the state of Nevada. So I understand how well regulated you are and all the hoops you have to jump through. So I'm looking forward to the development of this mine.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes. Hey, I wanted to thank you guys for coming out. My extended the invitation and prodding to you. You guys jumped at it. I appreciate it. Sorry, we had to change the dates a few times. So question, we've been working on a lands bill, and it's been said that you guys are going to try and get on it. As far as I know, there's been no discussion with you guys of trying to work your project into our lands bill. Am I, am I correct in that? I mean, you guys have no intent of even getting involved in that lands bill, correct?
No, we would like to be involved. If there is a lands bill, we would like to be involved in it.
Yeah, okay. And I'll say from my standpoint, we've got other lands and other projects and things that are far too important to, you know, tie to something that's, you know, that's important there. So not something I could support. This is the first time I've actually heard it from you guys or anybody that you want to be a part of that. So that, I'll tell you, it's a showstopper in my book. That's, we've got other projects that we've got to get moving along. And so, yeah, I'll just put that out there for now that, that's it's not going to, not going to, not going to happen as far as long as I have anything to say. We've been working on it long before I even heard the words have been. So and one of the things that really concerned me and I, I saw some of the eyes up here roll about knowing your audience and your community. And so if you guys start a lot of buzzwords about, you know, your carbon emissions and net zero and stuff like that personally, and I, I got to tell you, I'm a huge fan of mining. The state was built on mining. But sacrificing our communities in the sake of your company reading a net, you know, meeting a net zero carbon emissions or the country meeting net, you know, net zero, I don't give a damn. You know, I, I'm sorry, I'm not going to sacrifice our community so somebody can meet some, you know, pie in the sky goal of, you know, emissions. It's just not, it's not going to happen. Let LA or somebody cut their emissions. Let them reach net zero. And I'm not taking shots at you guys, but I don't see most people in this county talking about driving electric cars because they're not feasible for us. You know, we are still very reliant on hydrocarbon fuels. And, you know, you did touch on a thing, you know, if this does go through, I'm really concerned about sending stuff overseas to be smelled, and it drives up the cost. You know, we do need copper for lots and lots and lots of things. Why, if you can do it in Arizona, couldn't you do it here? What's this process you can do there, but you can't do anywhere else in the country? And, you know, add a very expensive step to the process.
Yeah, ideally, we would love to produce finished copper in the U.S. Our Arizona project, as we've, as we've announced it, it would have excess capacity to process concentrate. So that's why I said, and if that's up and running at the time we start mining here, that would be the perfect solution is to send concentrate to Arizona.
Are they, are they actually smelting there? Or what are they doing? And that's what I'm saying. So why could you do there that you can't do here and where else in the country? What's the difference?
So the process there is called the concentrate leach process where you're able to take the sulfide concentrate, oxidize it so that it can be leached and then solve an extraction into finished copper. It's possible we could do it here. So, and there's enough excess concentrate being produced in the U.S. And we may be able to fill that one completely up with, with third party concentrate and build another facility here. That's possible, and we would love to do that. But we're in the starting phases of building that operation in Arizona. Sorry, not building. We're still getting permitted down there. So ideally, we would produce finished copper here, but it's just where we are in the process. There's, there's a big distinction as, as well, Commissioner. In order to produce finished copper, we need a lot of copper oxides. The deposit that we have here with Mason project, it is a lot of copper sulfite. So getting it to finished copper creates some, some significant challenges. The project that we have down in Arizona is, it has both, is we do have a lot of copper sulfites, but we also have large amounts of copper oxides at high grades, which from a technical perspective, makes it a lot more realistic to be able to achieve the production of finished copper. Again, we're still exploring this deposit, but right now what we're finding is, is a lot of copper oxide, I mean sulfites, which usually what you do with that at the type of grade that it has is you produce copper concentrate and it gets shipped out. But again, we have more exploration work to do. And as we do that, you know, there is a chance that we could find some sources of copper oxides that then puts us in a better position where maybe perhaps we could produce finished copper. But that, we're, we're, we're still a lot of exploration and technical studies.
Yeah, I understand.
Understanding that.
Understood. So, again, thank you, guys, but I do want to, again, reiterate, like I said, I don't know who you talked to in the county. This is the first time you guys have ever addressed this board. I know you've worked with the community. I don't know who you talked to about our lands bill. I'm kind of, still kind of surprised about that, that we hadn't heard about that. And actually, that's going to be one of my questions for later on is where we stand on our lands bill. But I just cannot see jeopardizing our other, other items going forward for, you know, for a separate major item. So thank you, guys, again, though, for coming.
You bet.
So, listening through your presentation, I felt you were very disingenuous moving forward. You know, you start talking about how great it's going to be that we're going to pull all this copper out right here in the U.S. so that we don't have to rely on other countries. And then I hear we're going to ship it to China. I mean, you might want to work on your presentation because people listening to your actual words, it's like, you know, what, what are you hanging your hat on there? You know, okay, you pulled it out of our ground, but you shipped it to them. I understand the smelting challenges that you have. I mean, it's no different than, you know, if you're working with gold or silver, you know, processing of all those materials are not readily available to us around Nevada, and I get that. Having worked with mines a lot in, in the past and setting on sector councils appointed by the governor for three years for mining, been in and around a little bit, know enough to get me in trouble, but know enough that you're being disingenuous in your presentation. Another thing you mentioned, and when questioned, you backtracked. You were talking about the water. Now, I'm not here to control water. If you go find the water, that's up to you. You found the water. But you had mentioned so much water that you had and that you were under an agreement for eight thousand acre feet of surface water. When Commissioner Hawke Day asked about the water, then all of a sudden it became groundwater. So unless my ears are deceiving me, we went from groundwater to an option on some surface water back to groundwater.
But if I misspoke and said surface water, that was a mistake. It's all, it's all.
I specifically heard you say surface water. And then when questioned, what, oh, I'm sorry, you asked about it. What are you two did? It was on this side. Again, I, I'm not here to regulate the water. We got to state for that. But I'm curious. You mentioned you have twenty-two hundred acres that are patented mining claims. Is that twenty-two hundred acres of patented mine claims your privately owned property per that map?
Or? Yes, yes. So the land that was shown as private property, those are patented mining claims.
So what's your total acreage if you're private? I saw a map with a line, but what's the total acreage of that?
Private land is twenty-two hundred.
It's, it matches your patents.
Yes, those are all patented mining claims.
Okay. And then you said you had unpatented mining claims. So what's that consist of, the unpatented? And what's the date on those?
If you have the presentation, that's what we're trying to address in Slide seven. So an unpatented mining claim means that you've staked a claim on federal land and you filed it with BLM and with the county.
I understand.
And so we have the rights to the minerals that are there, but it's still federal land and the federal agency still manages the surface use of it.
And what's the date on those?
There are various states. There are, there are over a thousand claims out there. I could, I'd be happy to get that to you. Like, we have it in spreadsheets, but there's, there's over a thousand mining claims.
I, I would be curious to see a breakdown on, on your, on the mining claims. So, and then to address something that's already been brought up once, but I'll keep it short so we can wrap this up and take a break. The lands bill. I, I kind of agree with Commissioner Gray. We heard all the rumbles. We've heard from the citizens. We've had commissioners that went to Smith Valley or all the rumbles that, you know, you're, you're part of our lands bill. And yet, this is the first time you've ever came to the commission to talk about. Now, you may have talked to staff in generalities of things that you wanted to do, but you went out into the public. You say you want to be good in the community. We are part of our communities. So when you're out talking to the public people and you make it sound like this is a locked up deal, you're getting this land, Lyon County is going to give you the land, that's wrong. And believing me, I've heard it over and over and over again. I thank you for being here today and finally going on the record that you want to be involved in the lands bill. Don't know where that's going to get you, but I'm glad that you're here to actually admit it. I don't like backdoor deals. And I might be stepping And I might be stepping out this commission in January, but I'm not going away. So I will be watching and and the direction you want to go in. I am pro mine. But when you say you're working with the community, actually work with the community, work with your stakeholders. Make sure that we're all on the same page. Don't tell us one thing and then tell the community something else. I have a problem with that. So now that you came here and done all that and they've scolded you. I will revert back. There's any other comments from the board?
I do.
Hang on, Commissioner Henderson had a stand.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanna comment, just talk about the land bill. Yeah, we haven't seen anything on a land bill. Okay, from anybody. Okay, we've authorized it to start. I appreciate, I appreciate and encourage the involvement of all stakeholders and that includes you guys. The lands bill has not been decided yet, so just totally shut you out at this stage, I think is wrong. Whatever you bring to the table, I think we should listen to and consider. So I'm at least willing to do that. Thank you.
Yes, you may.
As to what we're telling the community, I can assure you, we don't say and we don't believe that the land here is a sure thing. We we understand it's. At best, an idea. Never said that we think that's gonna happen for sure. I mean, we understand it's a, it's a long battle. However, I I want to respond both Commissioner Gray and Madam Chair mentioned that we've never heard our involvement in this before. The the commission passed a resolution almost two years ago. To authorize staff to look at a land bill and our name was in that agenda. We're not, I mean, ultimately what the county decides to do is up to the county, but we we have never tried to. To hide it or to do a backdoor deal and we're, we'll come to present to this commission every month if you would like. So we're happy to do that. We have met with almost all of you individually outside of commission meetings. And if we haven't met with you, it's not because we didn't try. And like I said, we'll come present here anytime you want to hear it or or come answer questions anytime you want us.
Yeah, please know that your comments are well received. We don't feel like we've been scolded. Certainly appreciate, you know, your your feedback, but please know as well, our messaging. And that's very important to us and and I want to make it clear, our messaging. Is the same consistent messaging whether we are speaking to a governing body. Or if we are speaking with a couple of residents at 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 Dini's diner. It's the same messaging. I I mentioned earlier, trust. We know that the only way we're gonna earn trust is by being transparent. And being accessible. And it's gonna take a lot of time. One thing that we're not is we're not spin artists. We don't, we don't spend a lot of time creating messaging. That we believe people want to hear. We share honest information. Sometimes that honest information is not what people want to hear. But it is where it's coming from. It's coming from us. These are factors that we have to, you know, that that we have to deal with. But please know that our messaging will always be consistent. That's very important for us. What we share with you is gonna be the same thing that we share with someone else somewhere else. That's not. We want to be honest. We want to be transparent. And again, sometimes we're gonna say some things, we're gonna share some things that we know are not going to be unpopular. But these are issues and factors that we have to deal with in the process of trying to develop a line. We believe, you know, there are solutions, but a lot of those solutions are gonna have to come collectively from the community. We're not always gonna have the best solution and that's why we want to engage with all of our different stakeholders to learn from them all.
Commissioner Craig, you have something?
Yeah, great time.
All right, Commissioner Hawkeye, Jacobson, anything there? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, for coming. And ladies, almost forgot you were over there. Thank you. Okay, before we move on, we're going to take a short break. Minimum five minutes before for people on Zoom before we come back.
Okay, it starts at eleven o'clock.
You may want to mute yourself.
I will. See, we got what fifteen minutes so I can log back in. Okay.
Now, just remember, just remember.
I was gonna say, yeah, you lost me. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna proceed to item six F. For presentation only, presentation by the Western Nevada Development District on Activities, Function, and Issues.
Madam Chair, I do not see the representative here or on Zoom. So I will reach out to her and we can come back if she's. Something's occurred or something's changed for her.
Okay, so. We will. Move on to item. Nine for elected official reports. We have any elected officials for reports. Troy, anybody? Just want to say hi. Ah, we got a sheriff. He got it. He got up.
I can share for the record. Just a couple of things. You guys probably all heard that we've had a couple of significant events over the last week or so. Incident of north on our office involved shooting. It's pretty much been completed. The criminal investigation has been completed. We'll wait for the fire outcome on that. Our deputy was found to be. Well, in policy and regulation. We're working on the internal parts. That should be complete probably during next week or so. Return back to duty still. On the one south end of the county. There's a lot of stuff floating around out there. I can tell you that between the sheriff's office and the district attorney's office. And we're doing the best to complete that active investigation that's going on. I'm not going to say anything more than that. We're working very hard to make sure we can. Other than that, if you have questions, I'd rather answer.
Indeed, Commissioner Gray.
Just a kudo. So yesterday, school got back in session at River View Elementary itself and. People say September flying traffic was kind of screwy and there was a pretty good little incident out there. Your deputies, Craig, Ronette, and Sue Cup. Got out there quick, got the situation under control and got everything working really good and took a. What could have been a pretty ugly situation and wrapped it up pretty quick and got things back on track. So thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Keller. To piggyback a little bit off what Commissioner Gray said. I saw your officers out there from the high school helping direct traffic and keep that safe. They were backed out all the way on alternate ninety-five. Cottonwood coming on, taking a left onto their. Vehicles were all the way back to past the swimming pool. And then they start going around and coming down Shadow Lane and they were backed up all the way well past the street and a half those kids. So till we get to end up putting in some more safety features, it was good to see your officers out there. So I wanted to thank you for that. And then also recognize you were up firmly late last night at the city council meeting. And supporting officer and thought that was, that was a good deal. So thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anybody else? Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Valines.
Good morning, Sheriff Valines, Line County Assessor, for the record. I don't really have anything. I have an item on the agenda today. Just wanted to be here in case there are any questions about that. Business pretty, pretty much as usual in my office. I will be attending. I got invited to Silver Springs Advisory Board. They'll be taking October third. Now that that there's, if anybody has any questions.
Mr. Jacobson.
Madam Chair, I just want to, we had a debt management meeting this past week. And we were one short of a quorum. And Mr. Valines and his wife Holly were taking their daughter to college. And we were able to get them on the phone and get your wife online and she participated a day off. So just make sure you send a thank you from the debt committee. And we apologize for troubling you guys on your day off spending it with your daughter, so.
We're actually on the express through the highway too. I'm not sure how we even had phone service. It worked. I was telling her, I hope they hurry up.
Yeah. Right on. Thank you again, though. Tell her thanks.
Anybody else? Thank you. Hey, thank you for coming up and at least saying hi. Okay, any other elected officials? Seeing none, I'm going to go to appointed officials. Do we have any appointed officials today? Mr. Haskin.
Good morning, Andrew Haskin, Line County Community Development Director. For the record, a couple of things. I know Jeff touched a little bit on. On the meeting that we had in Silver Springs regarding the new FEMA letter of map revision that's. The Carson River Sub Conservancy has been putting together. Through some grant funding. As Jeff talked about, we had actually three hundred parcels that are moving out of the AE flood zone. And fourteen parcels that are moving out of the floodway. So that's a big deal, the ones that are moving out of the AE flood zone. And into X shaded or unshaded depending on where they're located. When the map goes through the FEMA process, they won't have to have flood insurance anymore. So it's a big deal for them. There were a few parcels that were actually added to the AE and the floodway. Just part of the mapping process. So there was four parcels that are added to the AE floodway. Those are folks that didn't have necessarily flood insurance before and then they're, but they're. And then there were seventeen that were added to the. On the whole, a lot of people were, were taken out of that. So it's pretty good news. It probably will take about a year for that to process through FEMA and maybe, maybe longer. So you can't, they won't be able to make changes to their flood insurance just yet. But then once that gets finalized and goes through, that'll be a big deal. I also wanted to point out that I gave you the community development report. This one is another one that covers two months because we didn't have a second meeting in July. I didn't have it ready to go by the first meeting in August. So just wanted to point out the year end numbers for the building permit summary. We had a total of two hundred and thirty-four new single family permits last year, last fiscal year. So that's from July first to June thirtieth. Total permits, most of them are, you know, all additions, altercations and that type of thing. Models or whatnot. But total permits, there was fifteen hundred and forty. And then if you look at the total permit fees, we were at one point one, a little over one point one million dollars in total permit fees. That all goes, of course, to support the building and community development department. Took in six hundred and three thousand dollars in road construction tax and two hundred and ninety-eight thousand in park construction tax. So I just wanted to point that out as kind of a highlight there. Something I'm doing new this year in the report. Is I will be doing, there's a second set of charts in here that compares year over year permits issued. Figure, you know, kind of the uncertain times would be helpful to see where we're tracking permit wise versus this last week that we had. So we made sure that we included that. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Just a quick question here. You know, I was noticing that we had eighteen commercial new permits. Those up the fifty quarter, they kind of scattered around the county were.
They were scattered around the county, but you, but most of them were probably in the fifty quarter.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question?
Maybe he said this before, but figures don't lie, but liar sure can figure. You did a really nice job on this report. Thank you.
I'm not sure if that was, Andrew.
I'm taking it as a compliment.
It was a joke. Good job.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Any other appointed officials? I don't see Josh running in the door. Okay, how about advisory board reports? Anybody from the advisory boards to report today? Anybody online?
Madam Chair, Jeff Page for the record, just for reports clarification, there is a report from the liaison as to where we are with. Viable compliance. So Aaron will be here next month to discuss. This morning, which will be present this afternoon, tonight for tonight's meeting.
Yeah, I've been following the emails and reports, so we're, we're getting there. We're almost there.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hockaday.
Yeah, we did have the little letter of correspondence from Mason Valley Advisory Board. Kelly Neville's had given a presentation last. Meeting after the last meeting at the advisory board. And I'm going to see if we can get her to present that to the commission because. It was very, very informative about Firewise USA and Ready, Set, Go. So she did a great job on that, very quick and very informative. So I thought I might bring that up next time for our information.
Okay, I look forward to it. Hey, seeing no other advisory board reports, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Actually, we'll be taking on all items. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board accounting commissioners with one action. And without an extensive hearing, any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Our consent agenda looks like it consists of items twelve through, turn the page here. Fifteen C. So Jeff, did you have anything that needed to be pulled or?
No, ma'am.
Okay, anybody from the board? Commissioner Jacobson.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, including items twelve A through fifteen C.
Second.
Here we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Commissioner Jacobson.
I'm just curious. I'm here, I know we're looking at a three percent raise or three percent hike in food for the prison. Is that correct? Pete, do folks in a nursing home? Are they fed for free?
Jeff, do I need to rescind the motion and pull that item so we can talk about it?
So I'll answer the question. So, no, people in the nursing home are not paid for free. That's what you're, when you get insurance or however you pay to have your loved one for your nursing home. My wife's already finding that out, so we're good to go.
Your meals are paid for.
My meals are paid for.
Okay.
She won't starve me to death. If I understand correctly, the, the contract is too hot, one whole meal, that's for sure. Yeah. So three percent, yeah, I'll be quite honest with you, isn't a drastic increase based upon where we are with logistics today. If you haven't been to Walmart lately, if I go into Walmart and find things on the show, so. That's where we are.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Jacobson? That was it? Okay. Any comment from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Five oh. All right, back to the regular agenda. County manager sixteen A for possible action approved language for a bill draft resolution BDR requesting the Nevada legislature to change the process of replacing. A county commission vacancy from a governor appointment to the board of county commissioners appointment.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a request of, of the board in giving direction. I consulted with Walker and Associates, the language provided to you that is the proposed language. I provided you the existing as well as the proposed. There's coordination and cooperation with Walker and Associates and discussions with various other entities. Making sure that we had it, had it right. If the board approves it today, then I will contact Ms. Walker and we'll get it in the fancy LCB format and send it off as BDR.
Okay. Commissioner Henderson.
But just, just a comment on this. I appreciate the language and that's good. Anything we send to LCB, they're going to put their language in it anyway.
That is correct, but we're trying to get.
Yes, yes.
As LCB proof as possible.
Yes, I, I've tried that many times over the years.
Okay. One second. So I'm going to bring this up real quick. Because the original motion to do this was if NACO didn't pick it up. Our NACO meeting is actually tomorrow.
Right.
So. When we're looking to adopt this, are, are we still looking to adopt this? Providing that's.
Well, we have, we have, I mean, if we approve this, then this is what we're going to use our BDR for.
Okay.
Okay. Whether or not NACO submits to BDR, which will be determined tomorrow. I have had some conversations with the NACO director. There are a couple of other BDRs they may want to discuss. So I think it's important that we go ahead and do this. If NACO does choose to do this, we can always withdraw it. Withdraw the BDR.
So Madam Chair, if I may, I would make the motion move to approve the language as presented. If NACO adopts a BDR with the same or similar language, that we will not draft the BDR. That way they're, take care of, if we know by Monday morning, I don't send him to Mary Walker, no harm, no foul. If the board has another media or that they want, I've got between now and September first, we can have a special meeting of the board of county commissioners. Discuss that issue as a sole issue and put together language for.
Okay.
For the record, BDR build reference.
That's just build draft request.
Okay. Commissioner Gray had his hand up, so.
So just one error on this and they may be, or we may be taking it for granted. But, you know, one thing I see in the verbiage of this does not say that that commissioner will come from the district represented by the vacancy. Last thing I want to see is a, an at-large member appointed.
No, my, my, my understanding, the way we, it'd have to be all the qualifications. That's not of the county.
Yeah, that's not what this is. Yes, I think we, I think that should be in there just so there's no miscommunication.
Well, and it's not unusual to put in a BDR and, because I have some thought processes too. Amendments can be.
Later.
Put in later on because I'm not sure. The way the, the language is, whether it'll fly directly like this, but there's some possible amendments that might make it worse.
I'm sorry.
No, so anyways, and, and as Commissioner Henderson knows from working with the legislature.
Through this process before.
Yeah, so anyways, Commissioner Hockaday also had his hand up over here.
That was what I had noticed that we didn't say anything about the same district. You know, everything else is very clear. I just looked at that and said, well, wait a minute, we could pick anybody from anywhere in the county. That's what it sounded like. So I had basically the same comment.
Okay. Commissioner Jacobson, you have a hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm going to probably be voting against this. I, I would like to see some. Measures maybe in place and maybe you can't do that. Maybe that's cart in front of the horse. But I would like to see some guidelines for this board picking the most qualified. And making sure that all board members have a say. I don't know that, for example, like we had a nomination today, second, and a discussion on chair and vice chair. While I didn't want either of those positions, I didn't want the chair, I didn't want the vice chair. I don't know that I had any say or a chance for anyone else on the board. To give their spiel on why they might want the chair or vice chair. I certainly wasn't going to speak. So using that as an example. I question. Whether we're going to get, whether this board would nominate the best person for the job? For the best person with line county's interest or. Someone active in this or that or the other. And that's where I'm at. I'm going to vote nay.
Madam Chair, may I address that?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner, I do think maybe we're talking two separate things here. Commissioner, I do think maybe we're talking two separate things here. If the first thing is to get authority in NRS for a Board of County Commissioners to appoint a replacement when there's a vacancy, that would bring us on par with both cities and school boards. As it stands now, county commissioners are the only ones that the governor has appointment authority. The second part of, and your concerns, I think, would be better addressed by a county policy and not have anything to do with the BDR itself.
Commissioner Gray.
Just a third point also to Commissioner Henderson, it's also one more step towards full rule. One less, you know, one less entity having their thumb on us.
And like I pointed out, there can be amendments. I've got a couple of ideas, maybe moving forward after we have our discussion with NACO tomorrow. So can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approves. I move that we approve to submit a bill draft request changing the appointment process when there's a vacancy on the county commission to where the county commission appoints the replacement, not the governor.
Question on that. Does that include the specifying what district that person comes from?
Yes, the, the, the first has to meet all, all other qualifications. It would have to be from the same party and obviously would have to live in the same district.
Correct.
Yeah, those are already part of NRS. We don't want to change that.
The, the, the party is.
That's what I'm trying to avoid. I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second now. Any further discussion? Okay, public comment. Seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
Nay.
Please note, motion was, or it was approved four to one, the name was Commissioner Jacobson. Community Development, 17A for possible action.
Yes, we have an 11 o'clock pack specific.
Oh, I'm sorry, I went past it because it wasn't time yet, and now we are past it. Okay. Okay, sorry about that. We do have our 11 a.m. Item 6G for possible action, review options and approve acceptance of an option regarding the issue. Excuse me, trying to sneeze. The insurance proceeds of possible reconstruction on the Dayton Depot. Mr. Foley, sorry.
Josh Foley, I think I'm totally correct. Thank you. I was trying to, you know, give you a break for the whole meeting, but I figured I should do something on this side. First of all, I want to express my appreciation to members of the Dayton Historic Society and Comstock District. They have been fantastic through this whole process over the last that's crazy, but over the last two years trying to get to this point where we didn't know what their insurance would cover, dollar amounts and what options we have for the board available this time. So they've been very good. I'm trying to take a, you know, a dragnet approach, just a fax man, here you go. So we'll, we'll go through there. Again, I'll answer any questions you may have, but I wanted to let the board know what options are available so that you can make an educated decision. If you have any other thoughts, these by our no me, or are by no means exclusive, we can we can look at other options as well at this point. So the the first piece of this is, this building was located and is, the property is located in the Comstock Historic District. What that means to the Board of County Commissioners is, any building that goes on this site has to be historically accurate. So in this particular case, we're doing a reconstruction, meaning the original building's gone, we have nothing there. And it's not like we're repairing and trying to do it historically accurate on repairs, but on a reconstruction, my understanding is, is whatever is documented historically accurate that has been documented of the building before it was destroyed, you have to build it back to those standards. If I'm incorrect, I'm sure the Comstock Historic District can, can give you those, those pieces. But as an example, and they give this example in the Department of the Interior's guidance, which I attached to the agenda item for the review. If all you have are pictures of the outside of a building and the building burns down or is destroyed, whatever manner it's destroyed, and you go back to reconstruct that and all you have documented are the outside, that's the only piece that has to be historically accurate as far as the representation, what you can actually document. In this particular case, we have a building that I believe has been immaculately documented inside and out. And so my understanding is whoever builds this, whether it's an insurance company or the county, or even if there could be a third party building it, it's going to have to be reconstructed historically accurate to what's been documented on that. The only caveat to that is it now has to meet modern building codes. And so what you do is if there are any variances on how you have to build it due to modern building codes, you do your best to make those non-disable. And they can get up and speak and correct me on anything that I misspeak and that's good. But that's my understanding in this particular situation. So we have a few options, and I put them in your agenda pack, but I'm just going to summarize and I'm just going to put it down to, to two different options. Even though there's more here, you can, you can take a look at additional thoughts and other ways of doing, well, three options. First option is, we tell the insurance company, you know what you need to do. You have the plans, which thanks to our Dayton Historic Society, they have gone through and worked with the engineer with the insurance company to come up with a set of drawings so they could price this out. They are not construction documents yet. They are just literally enough to, to come up with these costs. You can have the insurance company proceed forward with that and possibly even work with them to select the engineer that you want to do the actual construction documents. I know one of the discussions I've had with members of the Historical Society has been, there are certain methodologies where you can order lumber pre-cut, so you can put them together. I think kind of like blinking logs was the, was the analogy. And potentially that could be something that we could work with the insurance company and say, hey, why don't we do this? It will save everyone money if we do it that way and work with them. That is just one option on the table. The benefit to having the insurance company reconstruct it is they do not follow prevailing wage jobs. I know there's been a discussion on that. I checked with the insurance company. They have a legal opinion saying they don't have to pay prevailing wage on this job. I'm leaving that in their hands. It's not up to me to, to do anything differently with that. But that's the understanding on that side. Would still have to be rebuilt according to the modern building code and to the reconstruction guidelines that the Department of Interior puts forth as enforced by the Comstock Historic. That's one option. One benefit to that option, two benefits to that option. Number one, is much less timely intensive on staff. Number two, if it ends up costing more than what they've told us in these documents on, here's the check we write to you, county's not liable for any of that. The insurance company just pays for all of those costs. So those are two things for the Board of County Commissioners to be aware of in that type of discussion. Option number two for the board. And that option would be, is the board gets a check from insurance company, lets the insurance company know, we do not want the insurance company rebuilding in any way, shape or form. We are going to take control of this project and we're going to move forward with it one way or another. And once we go to the point that we get it engineered or construction documents and get it bid out and then get the actual cost, the insurance will, company will come in and pay us an additional check at that point to cover what their estimate is between the cost of the project if they were to do it and the cost of the project with us doing it with prevailing wages. Now, that doesn't mean that if we go out to bid and it is substantially higher than what they estimated, that they're going to give us any additional money over and above what's in the back. So in discussions, and they can speak for themselves, but just to summarize some of the discussions for you, and discussions I've had with the Historic Society, they are they really, really, really want to see this building reconstructed historically accurate. And they have the preference on what building methods are used when they do that. And they would like to be involved in that process. And if that happens, my understanding is they would come forth with $25,000 to cover the county's deductible. And if there were additional costs, they would work towards trying to locate additional costs, which they have been fantastic in the past, working with for exactly those type of things. So that is option number two, but option number two, the challenge might be on the timing of the funding. If it ends up coming in 50,000, 100,000, 300,000 dollars more, I don't know what the figure is going to be. I know when we, when we did, and this has been sheesh, I don't know, 16, 17 years ago, when we did the Silver City Community Center that burned down, we kind of checked the insurance company for somewhere between 300, 400,000, if my memory is accurate, in that ballpark. And we spent darn near $900,000 on that. And the difference came out of 10 bucks. And we weren't working with the Historic Society, Dayton Valley, for that particular project. They're very good at trying to figure out how to make funds last.
Josh, I got to ask you on that. How, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Well, and Commissioner Henderson's one had a question too, so if we're going to start.
Your pleasure, sorry. I, I just, yeah.
You're good, okay.
I'll defer.
Okay.
Yeah, why was the cost difference so great and why wasn't the insurance company held liable? I mean, $600,000 is not a penny problem.
I don't have a good answer for you. I can sit down and tell you my opinions after the meeting, but I prefer not to put those on hold.
Were we insured with the same?
Yep. There were a number of issues. Number one, we didn't build the bu, building back to the exact same dimensions as what the original was done. Some of the risk management decisions were not made by the risk manager of the county as far as discussions with the insurance company. There were a number of things I can sit down and talk to you privately. The other piece of it is, they didn't insure, well, we'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
There were challenges.
It led to problems. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to go back to option one. Okay, where?
And I have more options. I'm not finished.
Well, it's good to know. Where, where the insurance company rebuilds it and they say they have a legal opinion that they don't have to pay prevailing wage. So putting on my worst case scenario hat, we, we choose that option, we go for it, we get sued. Because that should be a prevailing wage job. The, the people that bring the lawsuit prevail. And yes, it was a prevailing wage job, so now money is owed. Who's on the hook for that money? Is it the county or is it the insurance company?
I am not an attorney, but my, my thought process would be that we would go back to the insurance company and say, this is insured to be rebuilt. You rebuilt it, there's additional costs legally that have to be incurred and those should be the insurance company's additional costs. In fact, so much so that if you take a look at what they're offering to reimburse the county for the cost of that building, they are putting an additional cost in there to reimburse the county for that prevailing wage differential on their done as well.
Yeah, because I, you know, they, they may have a, a legal opinion, but I can get a lawyer and get a different one. And I, I recall cases where a third party has built a government building to try to circumvent the public prevailing wage laws and got caught.
Right, and I would prefer not to have much of this discussion on the hold of the record. That's between the insurance company and the state, not necessarily where this was.
Yeah.
Other than to clarify, as you did, what would happen with that too?
Yeah, my concern is just make sure that the county is not on the hook.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Foley. Couple of things. First of all, I've kind of come full circle on this. Was one of the board members, I believe at the last meeting, mentioned something about, well, if we're rebuilding this, it's not going to be have the same integrity as, as, and I am as original. And I'm like, yeah, that, right, how is that, wouldn't that be our historic site then? And so I kind of had that in mind. Then I read some of the emails, some of the letters, and I've kind of, kind of come full circle. I would like to put it back on that. And I, I got to thinking, there may be some silver lining to this. I know you mentioned bringing it up to ADA compliant, meeting the, whatever, new standards, codes, whatever. They're looking at doing Fernley's train station and just to get that remodeled and refurbished is going to cost just about as much as building the new one so that they can use it. I mean, in the big picture, so I'm, I'm not speaking about a particular option here, but I, I do think that this would be good for the Dayton community. And then I do have a possible idea, which is rare for me. I wonder if we couldn't find an architect and/or engineer to donate some of their time or all of the time, include the high school drafting class or CAD class. And that would involve more community involvement, more community buy-in with the kids. They would maybe, I know that the CAD class in Fernley, they can create prints that are approved by the building department. And so this, I think there's some things in here that we could involve, maybe even the high school shop class. This could be, become really a community event, if you will, or, or owners, and more ownership. And so I think it's great. And then I, I do think it's odd that the insurance company is going to offer us 550,000 basically to rebuild it or 390,000 not to rebuild it. I, I guess that's maybe why I hate insurance, is you get, you get, you, they say it's worth 550,000, but yet they're only going to give you 380,000 if you decide not to rebuild. So I don't know.
And the rationale behind that, if I can clarify, is if they were to build it, the 380,000 is what they anticipate.
Prevailing wage.
Without the prevailing wage. So if we don't rebuild it, they'll give us what it costs them, which is the cost of the building. If we end up rebuilding it, they'll give us the prevailing wage dollar amount to cover the costs that we're incurred. So, so with that, can I finish my presentation?
Yeah.
Yes, you may.
Sorry.
And I know there will be other presentations, so maybe we can do all the presentations and then questions at the end or at the end of each presenter, however you want to do it. So with that being said, as far as the differences there, I think that regardless of what reconstruction occurs or who's in charge of it, it's still going to have to meet the federal requirements in the Comstock Historic District. Regardless of which, which way we go with this. The question is, I think there may be a perception that there's more local control over it if the county is in charge of it, then if the insurance company is in charge of it. I don't know if that's reality or just perception. I don't know, once you bid a contract and done it, once you to that point, a lot of that's, that's water in the bridge, I think. But in addition to that, just so the board is aware, there are some materials onsite that were purchased with grant funds. So those include, and they can, the Historical Society can provide additional details if I missed some of those, but that includes all the windows that were going to be replaced. So we have all the windows there, we have the doors, we have siding for the building, and we have a bunch of nails that someone hammered into square shapes instead of round ones. $3,000 of the square nails. Okay, so as far as that goes, and we'd have to double check to make sure that we're legally compliant, and I would imagine we would be with the DA, but I would think that we can contribute those towards the project, whichever route we go, whether the insurance does it, whether the county does it. We have those materials and potentially, maybe those can also count towards the deductible with the insurance company, because if I remember correctly, there's substantially more than $25,000 materials that are included. It's been a few years since we purchased them, so I'm not going to go to bat on that. The Historical Society probably has a better memory and recollection of that than I do. So those are the two main options I see in front of you and the benefits and the drawbacks of each. As far as the, the last option that I would let the board take a look at would be As far as the, the last option that I would, um, let the board take a look at would be. You don't have to reconstruct the Dayton Depot. I'm not saying I'm advocating for it, but my jobs provide what the options, legal options are to the board account. There's no requirement under state, federal, or local laws that asks for it. The board, if they choose not to rebuild it, the insurance proceeds, they get the lower amount. You can use that for, it's unrestricted. Use it for whatever you want to use it for. However, the land that it was located on, the depot was located on, was purchased with federal money that passed through. That grant documentation and the Historical Society was kind enough to help me locate that as well. Requires, if it ceases to be used in the original purpose, then we have to sell the property. At fair market value and reimburse N dot seventy five or ninety five percent or whatever that sells for. Again, still in historicals, um, Comstock Historic District, something historical has to. Or historically looking, has to be put on that property, however it goes about doing it. Not recommending, I'm just saying if you choose option three, that's the option, and those are the parameters that that are available. So now, I think I'm done with my presentation, and I'm open to any other questions.
Any other questions, or can we move on to? Commissioner Jacobson.
Just one, Madam Chair, thank you. Just one thing real quick. What's the odds of actually finding a contract right now with workers that are gonna work for less than prevailing wage?
Well, if we do it, I should, if you're asking for the insurance company. I would say you have, there are all sorts of them that are out there and that are building homes and all sorts of stuff that aren't working at state or federal. And so I think that that is definitely an option right here with the building construction, maybe a slowdown a little bit in northern Nevada area.
So you're, alright, thank you.
I'm not advocating for one way or another, just not so much.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're not Reno, so a lot of our jobs out here in line county are non-union anyways, so. Um, so who's presenting for us? Come on up, say.
I was just gonna say, Commissioner Jacobson, uh, I had all the answers to your question. My name is Stony Tennant, I'm here with John Crowley. My position in the Historic Society, uh, other than as vice president. Uh, I'm a hands-on guy with all the construction. I was a general engineering and building contractor for forty years. Licensed in northern Nevada. Uh, John Crowley, who will be assisting me here with answering all of the questions. Actually is Dr. John Crowley. He's, uh, is before they started a business at Mount House, he was CEO of major. Corporations, so he's the administrative guy, I'm the hands-on guy. I wanted to fill you in on what has happened behind the scenes. Since that fire. We have not been sitting waiting for money. We have hired an engineer on our own, um, to redesign that building to meet. Modern codes, wind, uh, snow load, whatever, uh, handicap, uh, handicap access. To meet all of the codes, and he has been stonewalled because, um, John and I worked together with Loomis. Spent hours and hours with them getting those plans right, uh, for what existed two minutes before the fire. And, uh, they have that, those drawings, which we wanted to get to our engineer, who is a, a post and beam, now they call it. Timber frame, uh, different, but we call it post and beam, that's the old style. This guy is a post and beam engineer from Truckee. Um, he designs all of these lodges and that kind of building that is. Open beam, and his engineering firm is specialty that kind of work. So we have retained him for, I believe, fifteen thousand dollars. Um, he has done the preliminary work on getting construction plant. Plans put together, so that we can actually get an accurate cost of what it's going to be to finish that building. We're doing that at our cost. Our efforts are constantly. In mind with the county, we don't wanna put the taxpayer in line county for one dollar into our restoration. Or our efforts out there. Sometimes we end up with utilities on the buildings we're managing, that kind of thing. So we do get some dollars from the county. County commissioners have always been very good at working with us because we've tried so hard to. Look out for the county. In this case. We couldn't get the plans from engineer, uh, of those engineered plans of the building just before it burned from Loomis. Because they said, the insurance company paid for them, they belong to the insurance company, and we need permission. To release those plans so that they can, the, this engineer and Truckee can actually finish the construction plans. And he will, uh, build the construction plans. He's a licensed Nevada engineer. You can wet stamp them and get them to the county. All engineering, all specs, everything put together for a construction bid, and we put it out to the construction bid. And then we can tell you specifically what it's gonna cost, and we will, if we can. Negotiate with the county and, uh, and the insurance company and get this, because we feel that building that building. Not to its historic. Appearance, because the thing is, the freight room and the room above the passenger section doesn't have any interior. Paneling or cover. So the old building, you saw all of that post and beam and bracing and square point nails that. Uh, the, the bats on the outside of the building. They nailed through with square nails and then clinched them over. And so you only have, uh, the bat, which is maybe three eighths of an inch thick on the edge, because they're. Contoured, they aren't just square bats like you see on a barn. Um, they, they are, uh, plain, and they. Have the side is maybe three eighths of an inch thick, and then you have a full one inch dimension. Siding on, and then the nails come through and protrude to the inside, and you would see these rows of. Silver nail gun nails. So we bought wherever exposed lumber is, we want. Nail with square nails, so that when you walk in there, you see the post and beam, you see the bracing, you see the square nails. And we even wanna go so far as a railroad yard smelled like oil grease. You know, we want it to smell right, we want it to look right, we want it to be an accurate reproduction. We don't want. An Indian village where they put aluminum poles up and nylon covering on it, call it a teepee. We don't want that to happen to our town. We want an accurate, as accurate, and. We would very much like to have some input in the control over this thing, because there are things that I know. As a construction guy, that other people don't understand. And an example of that that I bring up. Is nailing with square nails. Nails have a parallel side, and they have a slope side. And you have to line that nail up so that the parallel sides are in line with the grain of the lumber. You can't nail them sideways. Or ultimately that pressure splits the board. So, but. A contractor doesn't want to tell his guys, you know, to take the time to line the nails up, and they have to understand that that's the way you do it. They don't use waffle-headed hammers. Waffle-headed hammers leave a big impression on there. They have to use smooth face hammers. They don't wanna, carpenters don't wanna do that. They wanna slam that nail home and, and, uh, it's, you know, th- those sorts of things that. Just for historic appearance and integrity. We want some kind of control, if we can possibly get that. What, what other issues? I, I got ahead of myself, and there was something else I wanted to bring up. Eighty-two-year-old mind.
Commissioner Gray has a question over here.
Yes, Tony, it's good to see you back here again, and also as a, a member of the Comstock Historic District Commission, I wanna, I really wanna see this come to fruition and. Support you guys in your efforts. But, um, one of the questions I have is, uh. Now, today we use the waffle head or the waffle face framing hammers. They didn't use those then, did they?
No.
So that would be a huge thing, I think, to look out for as well. And I'm just wondering if there. If there's some way that we could have an, an historical advisor on site, you know, to work with whoever. Would the, uh, you know, would the, uh, Historical Society be able to provide somebody to, you know, ensure these kind of things aren't happening? Uh, you're, you're, that would be taking on an awful lot for you. I mean, I, I, what I'm thinking is maybe, you know, rotation or something like that.
Yeah, not really, because all of the concealed, uh, nailing, like roofing. Uh, anything that's in the interior walls, all of that, they knew you used nail guns, and, you know, that's fine with me. I don't care about that. What I wanna care about is what is exposed. And actually, there isn't that much nailing. Basically, it's the bats.
Okay, thank you.
Which show. And so, you know, they, they can do all of that other construction. Also, I wanted to say, uh, the post and beam construction, we, uh, John. Who is the, get, doing all of this administrative stuff, and he'll be up here to tell you about that or answer questions. Has lined up a mill that actually is in the business of, they have, they do it by laser, just like tooling in a machine shop. Now, lathe controlled by the, uh, computers. Same in this mill. They cut the lumber. They, it all comes ready to assemble. The posts are notched for when there's inlet, uh, for the bracing and the furlongs. They all come just ready to put together, and they say you can put the entire superstructure up in one day. But talking, getting back to what I wanted to say about prevailing wage is. By getting materials delivered that are in that kind of condition where it's simple to put up, less time consuming. You pay a lot less labor. The materials were lined up by John, come straight from the mill. There's no middleman involved in this lumber. You don't pay the wholesaler, you don't pay the retailer, you don't pay the transportation cost. We have to pay sales tax on it, but we eliminate a ton of cost in using this lumber. Acquiring this lumber, I think, will come out cheaper than they could balloon frame and do a modern building. And, uh, so we have lined up the engineer, John has lined up the mill that will mill it. John has lined up a contractor who lives in Minden or Gardenville, as a matter of fact, and they do those buildings up on the. Pines around Genoa and that. They do all of those post and beam buildings up there. That's their specialty. So there are people here locally who know how to do the work, and engineers who can provide the engineering. And we will pay for that engineer and all of that engineering, and then bring some hard costs back to you.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, really appreciate, um, your knowledge and, and, uh, buying on this project. It looks like you've been in construction for quite a few years, judging by your fingernails and how you've hit them with your hammer. Alright, is that smooth, or is that one of those waffle? Uh, with that, uh, Mr. Page or, or Mr. Foley, um. They're paying for the engineering, so we don't have to take that out to bid. But if we take this on, the engineer, or the. He just said, uh, the contractor out of Minden, using that guy, but would we, we would have to probably take that out to bid. Yeah, so.
I, I was saying that, uh, he would give us a price, and then we can come with, uh.
Oh, okay.
Little lumber package, the price that it's gonna cost, and we can give you firm figures, and at the end of the project. Also, I would, you know, add to that, that the Historic Society is willing to. The completion of the job is dependent upon the construction drawings. There are things in that building that we can just leave off of those construction drawings in order to bring this in. If worse comes to work. And we get prices that are above what the, uh, insurance company is gonna pay. I don't know. They said they pay the extra cost. I, I have no idea. We think we can come in below that six hundred thousand that they've already committed to give us. If we, if we can't, we are willing to say, alright, the masonry and the chimney that was in there for the stove. We'll take that out, we'll take out other things that don't affect the outside appearance of the building. But our interior, we won't put those in the construction plans, and we will raise the funds personally. To finish off that building that we want to, and we can guarantee that, uh, you know, worry about. Uh, the lawsuit or whatever, we are a different organization.
Right.
We feel that, uh, we shouldn't be using any more of the local tax dollars than we should, and we won't.
So I guess the reason I asked that is I just didn't wanna diminish, all of a sudden, oh yeah, now we're. Diminish your legwork and, and your behind the scenes on all of this stuff, and then say, well, then, then I took all this stuff to the Board of Commission, and then. They said we gotta go out to bid on all this stuff, and, and so I just didn't want, uh, I didn't want you to. Think that we didn't value your hard, your legwork and, and research and all that you've done on this. It's really impressive. Thank you.
Commissioner Gray has a question also.
Yeah, Stoney, so just to clarify also, you guys also said you were gonna contribute the deductible, right, of twenty five thousand?
We, we will do that. If, if we, uh, come to this agreement, we're, we're gonna do it in a historic manner, we'll pay, no, twenty five thousand.
Yeah, Madam Chair, so it sounds like we need to set this aside. Is that what we're looking at? Make a basically decision today to wait for another meeting for you to bring back the information to us to make a more. And intelligent decision.
And as I say, um, we need the assistance of the county to request the insurance company to release those plans. So that we can get started in that cause. We, that's stone, swelling us right now, or we'd have a lot more put together to, for this presentation, but. Um, I guess, uh, Jeff or somebody will have to contact the insurance company. And request that they release, that's what Loomis said.
I'm sure.
Commissioner Gray.
And this will be directed towards staff. Do we actually need a motion to direct that, or can, that, that can just be executed outside this, correct? I'm talking about the releasing of the plans.
So Josh Fuller, Land County Council, for the record, my recommendation with the board at this point would be. If that's the route you wanna go, not make a decision today on whether you have the insurance company do it, or have the county do it. But you wanna see if the insurance company would be amenable in releasing those records, and allowing the. Historics, Historical Society of Dayton Valley to pay for actual. Bid documents, I guess would be the proper term, all the documents that you can go to bid from. We can have those discussions with the. With the insurance company. I don't know that you need to make a decision today on your options. If you do that, you can just say, hey. Regardless of which manner we go, we would like to see if we, if this is an option with the insurance company. I can have that discussion with the insurance company. And go through that discussion, then bring it back, and if the insurance company says, hey, if they'll pay for it, we'll use those documents to bid it if we do it. And allow someone to be on site to make sure we're doing it properly on, on the square nails and, and some of those pieces. Uh, we can bring that back and have that discussion in your future meetings as well. If that's acceptable, and I don't mean to take up any of their time.
Don't run away.
No, you're good. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Foley, these questions are actually for you. I, I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my, my head around this, this whole thing. So the, the former depot and the property is county-owned.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. And do we have, uh, MOU in place or anything that allows Historical Society of Dayton Valley to do what they're doing now? To, okay, guys wanna make sure that we're covered, they're covered, you know, I, I appreciate all, all the work you guys put into. I just wanna make sure we're all doing this for all our. Tees are crossed.
As far as MOUs, what they're doing now, as far as going out on their diamond engineering, I don't know that we're required to, cause that's something they're doing voluntarily. And they're not actually doing anything on the site itself at this point, was what they're doing. So I don't think that's, that's an issue. We can't put together something formal. If we go to the insurance company and say, hey. insurance company, they want to do this, uh, we've been figured that. We are, we have a formal stewardship agreement.
Yeah, prefer no outbursts from the, if you want to step up though, because I can't get you on record from out there.
He was going to bring up the point that there's formal stewardship agreement for the property and the building. Without their rebuilding, I don't know if that covers Commissioner Henderson's question on, can they go out and pay for the engineering under that stewardship agreement? I don't know that that necessarily corresponds or doesn't correspond, but I don't see if there's a liability to the county.
That's my main concern.
Right. Sorry, if you want to.
I, I was just going to come in, Stoney, on the historical, uh, uh, committee on, on all the legwork you guys have done and your dedication to get this project back. I mean, that is a cornerstone building in our community and we were all looking forward to it being done and still looking forward to it being done. And with that, Madam Chair, uh, is it okay to make a motion?
I don't see anybody waving their hands. Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we tabled the decision and direct staff to work with the insurance company to release the information needed to execute the items we need to send it out for a bid to meet through, uh, with, uh, I guess the requirements that the Historical Society would like to see. Is that clear enough? And provided in that, you know, member of the Society to be on site, the allowance then be on site with, with anybody, um, you mentioned that. So I think that's clear as mud.
Historic Society, I think that's a decision down the road on them being on site, because we're not to the point that we're doing.
Okay, well, just when we get to the point where we have a contractor, we need to make sure that that's in the agreement.
Yeah. Um, after the motion, we had some people who would like to add more information because we know we're far away, we're a long ways away from a lot of the commissioners and, um, understanding what's going on over there. We do so much on our own. Um, there are some folks who would like to make some comments, please. I don't know what comes before the motion.
Okay, we'll get to it.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion. Do I have actual second?
Second.
Okay, that helps. Do we have any other questions for Stoney? Or can I just go to public comment? Okay, we're going to go to public comment now. Okay, anybody for public comment on this item?
John Brawley with the data, Dayton Historical Society, actually Historical Society of Dayton Valley. I just wanted to make a few comments. First of all, uh, I know Stoney's got a lot on his mind. He left off the third member of the group that's really working on this and that Stockton Linda Clements has been responsible for most of the money. And, uh, public disclosure, I'm closely related to her by marriage.
Maybe close.
But we, um, I, I don't know if we need to go over all these items, but we have raised to date, uh, 1.2 million dollars to get this project done. That goes all the way from buying the original property to, uh, buying materials to do it, to, uh, what we're at. Um, we, in addition, have added, uh, cash donations of over $44,000 over over from years 2006 to 2020. And we've got in-kind contributions that's worked from members of the society of over $417,000. The county to date has put in $1,000. So we, uh, we really think we, we've earned our keep here, we, being good stewards for the county, for the community and really just urge you, let's get on with it. We're ready to go. Um, I think that's it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Well, we're here. Given flashbacks in this building.
Walking in here, I saw you and I'm, I'm like, okay, we're going to put them back to work.
Pleasant memories. Can we have your staff report, please?
Um, Mike Workman, uh, Dayton resident, um, and past Public Works Director and Utilities Director for Lyon County. Um, uh, my wife and I also own property that's immediately behind the depot project. So we're neighbors. Uh, my wife and her family, uh, along with the, the tenants were founding members of the, the Dayton Historical Society. So there's some deep roots there. But what I wanted to speak about today was my involvement with the, with the group, uh, when I was Public Works Director. And we, sometimes, you know, you're working for the county, you're spread so thin, you're across multiple, uh, communities and you kind of lose focus on what's really happening right under your nose. And I often, I said, working with the, the Historical Society is kind of like herding cats because they've got so much going on all the time. But what I underestimated is how organized they were. And once, uh, Jeff appointed me as public or the board, I guess, appointed me as Public Works Director during the Great Recession, uh, we had to regroup and, and get organized so that we could maintain some, uh, sanity across the county. And Sean Keating, who you all know at the time worked for the county, was a building inspector, uh, and Tim Ogil, who, uh, has retired. He was in charge of facilities under the Public Works Reorganization. Uh, we worked closely with the Historical Society and what we learned was you better be to some of their meetings. If you want to know what's going on in the Dayton area with the historical projects, go to their meetings, go to their committee meetings, which uh, we were to at least attend most of them so that we could keep tabs on what's going on, uh, with the museum. Uh, at the time they were planning on the church project and of course the depot. And I got to tell you, uh, once you see the level of details that their subcommittees and individuals put together, it's amazing. And it's due to their dedication, their hard work and their attention to detail, that when you go to in any one of those buildings or drive by it, they're historically correct. Down to the, I mean, down to the, when they took the, the Dayton Depot apart and was preparing for reconstruction and moving it, every piece of wood was labeled. I, I mean, they've got maps, they've got details. So there, it's, it's real, it's, they are the real deal. And I was, I was proud to to get to work with them and, and get some of the projects going. The, the, uh, the fire station there, they no sooner got the fire station in the county was involved in that, uh, but when they got completed, a car hit it. I think Stoney was out there the next day and worked with Sean Keating to get things completed there. But, but they're a pleasure to work with. And if it wasn't for them, I don't know that we'd have anything of historic value in the Dayton area. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Me.
Hey, hang on one second. We still have a couple here in the room.
Good morning, uh, John Castonelli for the record, Dayton resident, and also a general engineer contractor. And, uh, I'm also a commissioner on the, um, Comstock and Store Commission. Um, and I could, uh, I don't want to be repetitive of what these gentlemen have said, but I've had conversations with Mr. Crowley and, and Mr. Tennant. Uh, they have a really good track record, even their projects, uh, within budget. Uh, this, I, I can't stress enough the importance. I'm also president of the Chamber of Commerce. And so from a business owner standpoint, um, that building is the, the future, uh, positive economic impact that it would have on Dayton, not only Dayton, but the county and the region, uh, is very important to us. And, um, I'd hate to see the insurance company come in and just build a replica, a facade. Um, the, uh, the importance of having this built with historic accuracy, uh, down to the nail is, uh, I think very important to this overall project. And it can be done. The timber framing is done, like Mr. Crowley alluded to, all over, uh, uh, Colorado. You see the large lodges and things, Tahoe. Uh, it can be done to satisfy, uh, the modern codes. And I think that, that is the best option for this is to have it as historically accurate as possible and done. Uh, and, and as far as the prevalent wages as a contract, I can tell you in many cases, right now, um, with the labor shortage we've had, standard wages have, have come up so high, they're in some cases almost at what the, uh, the prevailing wages are until those raised, which I'm sure they're going to do that as soon as they get an opportunity to. But, uh, uh, the differences, those cost differences are probably not as high as, uh, as some people think they. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Caston. Um, do we have anybody else in chambers? Okay, um, Mr. Saylor.
Hi, everybody. I'm Stephen Saylor, Executive Director of the Comstock Foundation. I was a founding member of the Historical Society in Dayton. Um, we have worked with the county on restoration of the historic Donovan Mill. Uh, we've had great, um, support from the county. And, um, the Comstock Foundation, um, is here to say that, uh, any shortfalls or any financing that, uh, um, might come up for the Dayton Historical Society will step in and help. And, um, we look forward to having their Dayton, Dayton Depot rebuilt, uh, historically. Uh, Stoney and John and all the members and volunteers, uh, locally always step up to the plate. When the, um, firehouse and the jail was redone, there was a $45,000 grant from Shippo. Well, Stoney and the team got everything done, uh, for 30. So they were the first people in the country to go back to Shippo and give them back 15 grand and Shippo was shocked. So I just would like to say that, um, they, uh, do what they say and, um, we're in total support. Thank you.
Uh, anybody outside the line? I'm not seeing any hands. Okay, we do have a motion on the table. I'm not going to try to reiterate that long motion, um, but basically we're bringing this back and allowing them to hopefully get some more information. You're going to give some direction trying to get that information. That was suggested that we have a second. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Hey. Uh, quick question up here. Uh, we taking a quick lunch? What are we doing?
It's hammer group.
Think of your employees. Anybody else got lunch? Hey, Jeff, are you, um, angry yet? Is, is everybody angry?
Um, beyond and keep in mind that we also have to travel to Dayton for another meeting tonight.
I know.
And so if we don't get a chance to eat before we get to Dayton, others have other meetings in Dayton this afternoon. So just however the board wants.
So let's take lunch.
I would recommend to take a lunch.
That's we're going to consider all, not just us.
Yeah.
Yeah, can we do a feedback by 1:05? Let's not take too long.
No dilly-dallying.
Yeah.
We are ready, Madam Chair.
No, I think it was that outfit. Do you know the difference between the front end of a cow and the back end of a cow? He's not answering. I've got pictures of me eating baby cows and, you know, banding cows.
There's a whole other world.
I know, I'm saying that. It's like an onion.
Might want to turn them back on. Are we recording, Jeff?
We are, ready to go.
Okay, so we caught all those crazy comments. All right, we're gonna call this meeting back to order, it's now 1:10. And so, let me see, we did do the 11:00 AM. Forgot to mark that off. So it looks like we're down to 13A. For possible action, approve a contract in the amount of 231,000.
Yeah.
Oh, it is. See, I don't mark them all off.
Seventeen A.
I just marked the top and the end. Okay, 18A.
Seventeen A. Seventeen A.
Oh, I'm at seventeen A, okay. I'll get caught up here sometime.
I am rubbing off on you.
Wow. Well, I made the mistake of checking it off earlier and then I went to the time specifics, that was my mistake. All right, 17A, we're gonna correction, correction, correction. Approve an amendment and extension to the 2009 solid waste franchise agreement between Lyon County and Waste Management of Nevada E. DVA, firmly disposal, reinstating and extending the franchise agreement until February 29th, 2024. So it's leap year. Andrew.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director, for the record. Yeah, this is an extension of, to reinstate and extend the old franchise agreement from 2009 with Waste Management. We did it in this agreement for 18 months. The purpose of that is to allow for about six months to get through the RFP process. That's based on what it took last time. I'm hoping to get through it faster, but if we get through it faster, it would just allow for more time for transition. And then a 12-month transition period if there is a new, if there's a new contractor. So that's the reasoning there, there's not a whole lot that changed in the agreement, the terms. We did include some information about the transfer station, Silver Springs, and the rate schedule and procedures. So I'm here to answer any questions.
I just want to make a comment, when I first saw the date, I went, whoa, wait a minute. But to be honest, after looking at the calendar and working it backwards, we're probably right in there, as far as I'm concerned. Commissioner Jacobson, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I totally agree with you on this. I appreciate the timeline, the only thing I'd ask is, obviously, and I see Kendra's online, I'm sure she's gonna have something to say, but Waste Management was good with that timeline and, and gonna sign off providing services whether they end up getting the bid or not. I, that's, I have no preconceived notion of who's gonna get it, but Waste Management is on board with that timeline, I assume.
Yeah, so we, they've reviewed this draft contract.
Hasn't changed all day.
Questions? Who was first?
Yeah, I raised. Okay, I don't care.
Commissioner Henderson, you start.
Two, two questions. And, you know, I reached out to you about that timeline at first as well, and my questions are related to that. So if Waste Management were the successful bidder for the new RFP, would we still have to delay the implementation of the new contract until February of 24? Or can we roll that over quicker? And the reason I ask that is because, and not saying it's gonna be the same, but on their last proposal, they came out with substantially lower rates. So if we agree to this contract extension, are we locking our ratepayers into higher rates until February 2024? Even if Waste Management gets the contract and their, and their new proposals at lower rates? That's one question.
Okay, so I believe the answer is yes on that. I'd have to, I know Steve's not in the room, but yes, I believe the answer is yes on that. We could potentially work with them to do an amendment and to enact a new contract. I, you know, we'd have, that would be a discussion point that we have to have with them. But in order to make the process fair, it'd be tough to kind of.
Well, and, and then the second question is if it is a, a concern other than Waste Management that has ultimately awarded the franchise, and they are ready to go less than, you know, say the contract's awarded in February 2023, and they're ready to go, they got all the equipment, they got staff, everything. Prior to February 2024, is there any provision where they can give notice that, hey, we're ready? Prove it to you guys, and then we can transition into a new contract?
Not in this, this amendment, there, there isn't.
Is that possible?
So it is something that, that is possible, I did talk with the District Attorney about this. So with a clause like that, it has to be mutual. So essentially, if we have the ability to give 120 days notice, they have the ability to get the 120 days notice. So we'd have to.
Defeat the purpose of having the contract.
It would kind of defeat the purpose of having the contract. So there's that, and they, they would also have to agree to it. There's an article, Article 24 in the original contract said that this agreement may be amended, altered, or modified only by writing, specifying such amendment, alteration, or modification executed by authorized representatives of both parties. So so yes, to answer your question, yes, it is possible.
And what my thinking was, if somebody gets it and they're ready to go, why should they be penalized after wait? But a, a, a good start, I'm, I'm okay with that, I'm more worried about if Waste Management was successful. Can we turn it over to contract quicker?
Why, why should Waste Management be penalized, though? Because, you know, for.
So what extent, what, what do the customers pay more, obviously, especially?
I know, but if we're asking all the companies, every bidder, to bid this apples-to-apples, same playing field, then I think we should play with the same calendar across.
That's where we got in trouble before, we're gonna have apples-to-apples.
Yeah, everything needs to be equal, anyways, Commissioner Gray, you had a question?
I did, and I, I want to apologize, I, I missed that date when we were doing the agenda review. Somehow I saw it's 2024, but I didn't see 2024. So I initially went through the roof, and I got a call from another commissioner saying, what's going on here? And, but I, you know, having sat down, thought about it, let my, let my, you know, pressure off a little bit. I think it's also a perfect, a perfect timeline, it allows us a little bit of latitude and keeps Waste Management on board. Continuity of service, and going back to Commissioner Henderson's comment, I think to keep the playing ball or the playing field equal, you know, if we start talking about them rolling it back and rolling rates back earlier than, you know, than, earlier than the end of the contract, I think we potentially get ourselves in trouble. So I think once we sign the contract, we've signed the contract and we move forward. And I do want to, I want to commend Waste Management also for, you know, being willing to extend as well.
Madam Chair, if I may, to address a couple of points. So in regards to the timeframe, I'll give you an example of what it's ideal to do today, Mason Light Fire. A month and a half, two months ago, ordered a new pumper tender, which is a 3,000 gallon fire engine, it's a typical fire engine, not just a water tank. The company will take delivery of said chassis in the last quarter of 2023. They will not have the vehicle ready until the second quarter of 2024, if everything goes as planned. So if Waste Management or a larger company gets the franchise, they may be able to absorb those requirements through their own operation. A smaller company gets it, and they have to buy equipment, we're looking at a minimum of a year where you can get some of this stuff. So that's why when Andrew and I had the discussion about timeframe, that's why we put the timeframe into Commissioner Henderson's question. If Waste Management is awarded the franchise, regardless of who's awarded the franchise, there's still some negotiation that has to go on in regards to a number of things. Make sure he understands the franchise, as an example, if they're gonna build, anybody's gonna build transfer stations. Here's where you can build them, by zoning, those types of things. So I, I do imagine that that could be something that could be discussed, Waste Management, if they were to win the franchise, about starting that early as a part of the negotiation tool. That is kind of, kind of my understanding and discussing earlier with Julio, Mr. I was gone. So I, I think, I think there are some abilities to work with that, and it's very transparent.
Commissioner Gray.
With that being said, do we maybe need to look at, maybe talking about a, I didn't realize that was, the supply chain was that far out on vehicles? Should we maybe look at a possible?
How much, how much of a delay it is for a garbage truck?
Can I, real quick, please? And this is for all stuff, can we, should we look at a possible six-month extension on top of that, an option to extend? Or, not that I'm excited about that, but it, uh, yeah, and I'm actually, believe it or not, I'm not as worried about getting the vehicles as I am the bins.
Yeah, no, absolutely, so that already is a provision in this.
Okay.
If you look at the, the last whereas on this page, it says, whereas both Lyon County Waste Management wished to reinstate and extend the franchise agreement for an 18-month period with the option to extend the temporary contract for an additional six-month period, and that's.
Thank you, you were, we're on the same wavelength. Throw a ball at me, somebody? I'm kidding, I'm kidding. All right.
Getting ready for next time.
So we're looking for motion?
Commit, hang on one second, Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you, Chairman, Chairman, Chairwoman Keller, I'm losing my mind, thank you. I, I think we all received a correspondence from a, one of the trash companies, and they had two suggestions in there. And I brought, I alluded to this earlier about special events. And I, and I was reading that, and I got to wondering, so let's say there's a special event in Urine, and for the most part, I believe all the special events.
Yeah.
Tonight's discussion.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that, right now, we're just looking to extend, yeah, so.
Roger that, thank you.
So keep your notes.
You are absolutely correct.
Any other questions regarding the extension? Can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve out of 17A as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Gray, seconded by Commissioner Jacobson. Any further discussion? Public comment, all the public seems to be online. I'm not seeing any hands, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, I don't have to give you names, it was 5:00.
And look, Kendra is still smiling.
Oh, I didn't even go to Kendra.
She didn't ever hand up.
That's true. She's still smiling, though, she's got that pretty picture up there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're all good, right, Kendra? Yes, thank you, thank you. All right, moving on, I tried to do this one earlier, 18A. For presentation only, presentation of the Rural Regional Continuum of Care 2022, point in time count and homelessness in the, I started saying Nevada, in Lyon County. Sheila Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services, and Heather Benson, Adult Services Division Manager, and Lyon County Human Services. I thought there was gonna be another name when I kept reading, but there wasn't.
Just the two of us this time, although sometimes in the past we have brought other folks with us.
Welcome, ladies.
I'm Sheila Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services, for the record. I'm, I'm just gonna do a quick overview, and then I'm gonna pass it off to Heather. Heather and her team are the ones that do the direct service work within our housing programs. So she's gonna share what they've done over the last year. But to start off, when we talk about housing, I think it's important for everyone to be aware of the continuum. It's important we have the same language and understanding of the vast variety of types of housing, and this infographic provides a great visual of that continuum. So you have special needs housing, which includes transitional housing, emergency, emergency shelters. And then assisted living types of housing, community housing, supportive housing falls within that, and all of those are the government assisted. So when you hear of subsidized housing, they fall on that left side of the continuum. And then the non-subsidized housing, affordable housing, and market rate housing. So separate, low-income housing is subsidized housing, and that lives on the left side of the government assistance. Those are individuals with vouchers, those are individuals receiving assistance to maintain their housing, whatever that may be. Right side, affordable housing that meets the 30% of area median income, and fair market housing, no subsidy on that right, right-hand side. So when we're talking about homelessness, it's important to consider that individuals aren't gonna move from literal homelessness into that right side, that non-subsidized side of the continuum. They need government-assisted housing, it's the next step up from homelessness. Rural homelessness has traditionally been an unseen issue without major cities and urban hubs where individuals gather, the homeless are seen sporadically, and when you go further out to our recreational areas and into our other pockets where there are services. The fact that we're seeing more and more of our homeless neighbors is visual evidence that the homeless population is growing within Lyon County. The data is tough, so when you guys looked at that point in time count, that's a snapshot, that's a day. And they choose that day, we all go out on that day, they choose it in the dead middle of winter, because if you've got literally nowhere to go, you're gonna be outside in the middle of winter. But it's not the best snapshot, all of that data collected is based on people that are willing to talk to us and what we're able to find. So some individuals get way far out into our recreational areas, and we're not able to find those folks. Other folks migrate and travel around based on weather and other access and other, other services that they can, you know, connect to during different times of the year. So Heather's gonna go into all of that with you guys, but I just wanted to point out that the fact that we're seeing visually more and more homeless individuals in our communities is proof that this population is growing and proof that we need to be creative in how we provide services, encourage people to connect to services, and really start working them through this continuum, which starts with getting them into that special needs types of housing. Like stepping stones. So some quick trends overall, you guys have mentioned it, it was mentioned earlier by Commissioner Hawkeye, individuals are living in RVs, they're inoperable vehicles and trailers situated on private lands. We see more individuals on private lands than we do on a BLM or other lands, which is harder in a partnership that we've got going with community development and how we can help pre their code enforcement step. But again, that comes to individuals that are willing to connect to services, and then if we're willing to connect to services, what do we have available on that continuum? When you don't have anything available on that continuum, getting somebody to connect to services and stay connected, when you're looking at bullet point four, where low-income housing has. When you're looking at bullet point four, where low income housing has a three to four year waitlist. So somebody that says, yes, help me and we start working with them and start getting the benefits that they're eligible for, start working on that income. But yet they have to go back to the river to sleep because they've got nowhere for them to go for maybe three to four years. It's a pretty tough cycle to work through and a pretty tough cycle to stay committed to when you're literally homeless. So what we are finding is homeless individuals are locating to harder to find areas as we come through with our different outreach efforts, code enforcement. Every city and community around us, Carson City, Churchill, everybody's working to try to identify, have it addressed the homeless issue. And the more that we push, the more they push farther out into the areas that we can't access or connect. So we're not necessarily solving the problem, we're just pushing them out farther. Um, most unsheltered people share that they're connected to services, just and to consider that a lot of the that they've come around to, we've sent them and connected with them. I've got a manager, we're still just waiting on, on that application or that. With that, I'm going to pass it off to Heather. Share a little bit more of the details.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Heather Benson, Lyon County Human Services, Adult Services Division Manager. Thank you, Sheila. Okay, for a point in time count, this is as Sheila shared, one day, the year, generally it's the last Thursday of January. This past year, so twenty twenty-two, it was February twenty-fourth was the date that we conducted a point in time count. But the point in time count, we are mainly connecting with individuals who are classified as unsheltered. Unsheltered or individuals who are living in places not meant for human habitation. So that is living on vacant lands or living on lands with RVs, tents, campers without legal hookups. So they're not supposed to be there. Also includes living in their vehicles, intense sheltered in parks. Picture there. Also on the point in time count, we look at individuals who are living in hotels that are paid for by agencies or to lack of. So on the day of the point in time. For the rural counties with unsheltered count, this is a snapshot of what those, the face of homelessness looked in each county. For our county, you'll see that the highest that we had was unsheltered, I'm sorry, school count of three hundred or by our smaller numbers of motel with our unsheltered being forty-nine. First was the Ny- Ny County with a they compile their data, send that to our continuum of care, who puts this report together for us. So it's not something that our agency goes out and communicates and verifies with the schools. So the breakdown for that school count is individuals who are doubled up, so youth who are living with other families. Our families with families, multi-general households, those are doubled up as the highest number of our two hundred and seventy-three shown. Youth identified as living with adults in hotels were twenty-three, you can see the sheltered and then the unsheltered of twenty-four. Also for our point in time count, this is a pattern track and trending from twenty twelve. You can see that the twenty seventeen, eighteen, our numbers was consistent at fifty with the gradual increase of ninety-eight. In twenty twenty-one was a drastic reduction due to COVID, was a no contact point in time count. So during that point in time count years, observation only, there was no interviews, there were no surveys. It was visual observation of staff of who was blatantly a homeless by observation. This last year of twenty twenty-two, we ran into some hip hop, so we were not notified by our area or region that the point in time count wasn't going to happen in January, but got pushed back into February till about three weeks notice. So in January, we had already secured sixteen search teams throughout Lyon County, which include the partnerships of Healthy Community Coalition, the Sheriff's Office for Search and Rescue, the VIPs and through our agency as well, our most team. So on the time of the February rolled around, we had lost five search teams. So is it true for our number to really show a reduction to the forty-nine? I can't say that that's, that's factual because we weren't able to cover the counties we've had previous years when we had our full search teams out in the field. I can say that I was participatory in the point in time count in firmly. I was fortunate enough to have Mayor Rory Edington with me and we only got to maybe a half of our search route because we were five shy of our search teams throughout the county.
Say that again.
Five shy of our search teams, but we were slated to have sixteen, we only had eleven. And had we had my whole, I'm hopeful for this next year of having the full sixteen because that, that would give us a realistic time to get out and scour the areas as we had. So another part of our homeless outreach efforts, it was asked of us if we can please go out and conduct some homeless outreach in addition to the point in time count. So we, our agency partnered with BLM, our most team, Lyon County Sheriff's Office, and we did that. So for our outreach partnership results, we throughout our timeframe, we connected, connected with thirty-three unduplicated adults. The largest age range you can see is twenty-five to fifty-nine. Most individuals were on private land. So that's both fifty-two, fifty percent of them were on private land. Individuals had source of income with, would be, so thirty-six percent of them had income being employment, social security, SSCI, VA. Through the individuals that we connected with, forty identified with mental health conditions, forty-nine living with a disability and twenty-seven percent identified as substance use disorders. So a big question I'm asked frequently is where are all these people coming from? So with the thirty-three that we connected with, the highest percentage was coming from Reno. Well, we hear a lot and it's going to share what, what information that I hear frequently is when this week started happening in Reno and Sparks area, folks started coming out this way. And Carson City, we hear also that due to a lack of housing, Carson has their shelters being full, that the common idea is folks can just pick up a tent and be out and land somewhere or find a friend and stay on the house or their land. It's an easy, quick fix for them, especially if they're being charged two to five hundred dollars in one rent if they're on that fixed income. Sounds like a heck of a deal, right? So moving forward, through that BLM partnership, we're not actively going out on a regular basis, yes?
I just before, I just want to ask before we leave this slide for sure. So, um, so forty percent had mental health conditions and nine, or I'm sorry, twenty-seven percent identified substance use disorder. Do you guys also ask the question if they're being treated for the, for those or if they want treatment?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Gray. Yes, we do. Uh, we not only ask if there are medications where they're getting treatment also, but if they're interested in getting help, getting reconnected if they're not. And we do, our agency does help them with that connection.
Did you guys find that they were already getting help or with most of them just being untreated?
Most were untreated. What we found for mental health is that they were picking up their medications, taking medications, but not receiving the, like the counseling treatment or any of the, the services that usually go along with medications.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So for programs and services that our agency offers, for our Adult Services Division, we do a homeless assessment for any individual identifying that they have homelessness. Through the homeless assessment, first is to identify if there's any emergency need such as fleeing domestic violence, if they need to go into a shelter, if they have family or friends that, that will help them, if there's any emergency need that we can help eradicate that homelessness situation to ensure that they're safe, we do that. If there isn't that emergency need, we do roll into our full coordinated entry assessment to determine homelessness, length of homelessness. If there's any barriers that have been identified, then roll into case management. So for the case management, we identify goals, barriers, and we start the service connection between the case manager and all individuals involved. So it's not just the head of household that we provide services to, we want to make sure that every person within that unit is connected to the services that they need with the hope that we can help them stabilize and continue to move forward. The challenge with the housing case management, as Sheila shared, when you're looking at a three to four waitlist, three to four year waitlist, it's getting more challenging for the case manager to keep individuals connected to services. So two years ago, we had the approach that we shared with individuals, getting the house is easy, keeping the house is difficult. That's not the case anymore. So we're having to take more of an approach of selling services to increase the health and wellbeing of the individuals, hoping to maximize their resources so they can look at other housing options, not being so reliant on this three to four year waitlist, which it makes sense, but it's a tougher sell for individuals when all these years, it's been the housing voucher being the golden ticket when it's really not. So after an individual is connected to housing, the work doesn't stop there. We try to help them stabilize with housing, stay connected to services, retain that housing, make sure that the income is still stable and secured. And then we'll phase them out so they can continue living their lives. The other activities that we participate in is the annual point in time count. And we rely heavily on the relationships that we have with community service providers such as mental health, substance use providers, jail reentry providers, our most team, Healthy Communities Coalition for basic needs. So any, it takes a village, it truly does. We can expect for a team of five to be successful and impactful in this alone. It truly does take everybody. So for our Lyon County Human Services, for our Adult Services for fiscal year twenty-two, we assisted four hundred and forty-two individuals, this is unduplicated individuals with homeless prevention. So in addition to helping eradicate homelessness, another big piece of the housing continuum is to prevent individuals from becoming homeless. So of the four hundred and forty-two individuals that we've served, a hundred and seven of them, so twenty-four percent of the population that we serve were proven and identified as being touched by homeless. Our grant goal is still written that our, our goal is fifty percent of successful housing. For the last few years, we have not met that fifty percent goal. This past year, we've met twenty-two percent. We're still seeing successes, but we are not connecting our fifty percent goal due to the lack of the housing options and availability that are not present. So as a success for our team though, for the individuals that we've served, fifty-two percent of those who identified as needing mental health services were connected to, with those mental health providers. Fifty-four percent were connected to substance use and some of those folks could have had mental health and substance for the co-occurring. So I still see over half of those successfully connecting us as a huge win. If individuals are told upfront, we're very transparent with those that we serve, that there's no, no secret drawer with keys to a home. However, we can help you get connected to mental health, that takes quite the sales pitch. And so we've been successful with that and I'm thankful that the clients allow for us to continue to help them with those needs. Other services that we assist with is income security, so connecting individuals with social security, the VA, health insurance, nutrition programs, transportation, hygiene items. Our approach is we can't guarantee that we're going to meet that fifty percent goal. We're still going to have them continue with that pro-social activity, connect with our agency, get connected to employment securities and health, so if we can help them help themselves in any manner that we can. So right here in this slide, I would just like to give a shout out to my team, just commend them for the dedication, perseverance that they show. It does get harder and harder coming to work every day, knowing that we're not seeing those high number of successes. But they are committed to the service and the work that we do. So I just, uh, we wouldn't be, I wouldn't be as successful in my position and helping clients without the backing of my team who show up to work every day with this commitment that they show. So our goal line in Adult Services is to help individuals find a safe and secure and affordable place that they can call home. Sheila?
Thank you. So Lyon County is not alone. Nevada has a housing issue. Nevada's not alone. The United States has a housing issue. It is a crisis everywhere you go. Unfortunately, with the way that our state works is they identify data from Washoe County, Clark County, and then the worlds get lumped together. So we are reliant upon the data and the point in time count and the information that Heather and her team are able to collect throughout their day in and day out. But we can show you what the Nevada Housing Coalition produces. And they say the state of Nevada is short eighty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty rental homes in the affordable range. And it's a huge number, right? But that's all of Nevada. Um, when you look at what they show as far as income groupings go, the annual income for extremely low income folks, the maximum they could afford in housing is five hundred and forty-one dollars. For very low income households, thirty percent of AMI or fifty percent of AMI or less, they can afford nine hundred and six dollars. Low income households can afford a thousand, four hundred and forty-one. When you look at that on the second little graph there at the bottom, as far as what industry that sort of aligns with, if you consider a public administration industry worker can afford one thousand, four hundred and ninety-six in a monthly housing cost. You can't find anything to rent for fifteen hundred dollars if you have anything more than one person in Lyon County. And if you're lucky to find a one bedroom apartment with availability at fifteen hundred bucks, it's just not out there. We don't have that full continuum available. And when you talk about fifty percent of individuals living homeless and getting them to be willing to work a treatment program and work it long enough until they've got that, that open space. I mean, it's hard to stay sober when you're going back to sleep at the river. So looking at the shortage, looking at the numbers, we know Nevada's got a problem. We've talked about the regional trends, the low vacancy, the increasing rents, we're seeing tons of displacement happening in Lyon County. The more the rents increase around us, the more folks that were living there are moving out to us and they're displacing our residents. We see so many of our seniors get displaced and within the last year, they get, or them being evicted from the trailer they've been living in because now somebody's willing to pay twice as much because that's still cheaper than what they were paying in Reno. We're seeing a ton of displacement. Heather mentioned not being able to utilize vouchers, that used to be the answer, right? If I just got that voucher, but now folks, the market is so tight. Landlords don't need to accept vouchers. There are people that are ready and willing to pay way more than that. They don't have to deal with it, so they won't and they're not. And we've been continuing to see that trend in the working floor. A lot of the folks that we connect with have a job or have their benefits. They just can't afford to go anywhere. A lot of the regional barriers, shortage of services, shortage of transportation, isolation. And I, I think I've, you know, probably continued to kick the horse when it comes to the housing option on the continuum. But what I want to share with you guys is, is something to be aware of and something to definitely get on your radar is the concept of supportive housing. I anticipate this legislative session, you're going to see quite a few bills coming across as far as supportive housing and what that looks like. Clearly I don't support anything that puts any unfunded mandates on the county, but this is definitely the way of the future when it comes to what is the solution for our homeless when it comes to housing. Emergency shelters are, are definitely a thing of the past, right? Those that exist are existing. I know Reno built that big, beautiful cares campus and it's done a lot of good. But most people don't want an emergency shelter in their community. And I get it, but supportive housing, just like we've talked about, if you are expecting an individual to address their behavioral health or their substance or their co-occurring problem, we've got to give them somewhere to live. If we're going to help them get through that too, because they're not going to keep working that program if they're going to go back and freeze at the river during the winter months. So supportive housing is usually for those lacking the housing, lacking housing who face a multitude of, of complex problems. Residents of supportive housing are linked to intensive case management and life improving services like the treatment providers and anything else that they're addressing. The ideal situation is that they're on site. So you have a apartment complex that's got units available and you've got services on site that provide those services there. Residents pay rent, just like they would anywhere else. We utilize whatever their income is to help offset the cost of the units. Um, and Corporation for Supportive Housing is the major operation that's been doing this work. And cost studies in six different states and cities have found supportive housing results in tenants decreased at homeless shelters, hospitals, emergency rooms, jails and prisons. It saves a ton of money when you can help somebody get those four walls in that roof and then start working them through the treatment process. And then from there, work them into low income housing and then up the continuum. So supportive housing is the way of the future. This is what's being pushed and I can guarantee you're going to see some legislation on it this upcoming session. So it's something to pay attention to. We are going to be writing to CBVG for a housing needs assessment for Lyon County from the Corporation for Supportive Housing. And I want to just kind of give that pitch, although we'll be talking about it at the next. From the Corporation for Supportive Housing. And I want to just kind of give that pitch, although we'll be talking about it at the next. Board of Commissioners meeting in a formal sense, that they provide an amazing assessment and not just for supportive housing. So they identify the number of units that you're short, but across the continuum. What the current cost is to build that and what the current cost. Or what the current cost is to maintain it and really provides that full housing spectrum need. And if we were able to do that for the county, when you're looking at how the majority of things are moving into a regionalization approach. If there were to be a push for regionalized supportive housing, we would have a needs assessment saying this is how many beds or units Lyon County would need. It would give us a solid figure to work from. It would give us the data points that we need as a county to be able to advocate for what works for us. Just trying to prepare us for what the future might look like in this housing arena. Cause I know that it's going to be a big issue this legislative session. That's pretty much it. I mean, I, I think I preach the system issue a lot. They don't have a magic bullet answer for it. Where do you start increasing wages, reduce the cost of housing? But I mean, that's really what equals that creative living, right? When folks aren't making the money that they need to make to pay for the housing market that's available. They start doing creative stuff. You start living in a trailer, tenting and you know. Doing other things that create unsafe situations in our communities. So where we start, really, I mean, it's two ends of the spectrum. Help those that are going to live there homeless, live homeless safely without impacting our community, which is tough. And then also how do we build systems and houses and supportive housing? So those that want to get help can get into a house, get the help and start becoming productive. But you gotta work it from both ends and you gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, it's a tough job, no matter what you do. Heather, great presentation. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And you know, Shayla, I'm sitting here listening to you. And I get calls daily and, and I've even gotten calls recently, you know, because I was looking at your charts and the incomes. You know, you're, you're talking from homeless up. We've got a whole population out there that's working. Many of them school teachers. That are calling me, asking, you know, any kind of a rental. They don't care what it looks like. One bedroom, two bedroom. Willing to team up with somebody to pay fifteen hundred and we can't find anything. There was one that came up available over by my house and it was gone within thirty minutes. It was just gone. So I don't know the answer either, because you're, you're dealing with the homeless trying to work to the low income. We've got people sitting there that are working, but they're now considered low income. Might have been a decent job a few years ago, but it's not now. Not with the prices and with the inflation. And, and I don't know how you keep fighting that. I mean, yeah, you say let's raise wages. Well, then the inflation just goes up with it. So there is no end game in that, but. All I can say is we, you know, I appreciate all your numbers and your data and you know. All we can do is keep looking for solutions. And I'm sure I kind of spoke at first here and I usually go to these guys first, but. Any comments, questions for Shayla or Heather?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Just, just want to echo your comments. It is a tough job and where do you start and where do you end? You know, because. There, there's a balancing act, you know? We want to help people out, give them a helping hand up, but not a handout. And then you get people in the system and they can't get out. They stay there. So you guys have a tough job and I. You know, appreciate everything you do and God bless us. Good luck.
You know, and this isn't meant, I mean, it's negative beside directing at you guys. What is the difference between this and say, uh. You know, government projects. I mean, great intentions when they started the projects, it was supposed to be a hand up and they were supposed to get in and get out. You know, they had rules. You drive around in a government project anymore, you know, the rules are out the window and people are there literally I've seen for generations. And you know. Some of these people forget supportive housing. They need, they really need institutionalization. And we need to start looking at that again as well. So I'm just trying to figure out how this would really work, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it comes down to, and in the areas where it's been successful, it comes down to having the. A solid application eligibility process, right? Supportive housing isn't for everyone and there are individuals who will continue to be homeless. We're always going to have a portion of our population. That chooses to live homeless.
Rules. They don't want to live with responsibility.
Absolutely, right? And so I think it comes down to, and I don't think that the government should necessarily be the individuals operating the supportive housing. I think government agencies make terrible landlords and, and terrible real estate agents. I don't think that that's anywhere that. County Human Services Agency wants to be. Absolutely in a supportive housing situation, we would want to be involved in regards to that intensive case management. We would want to be involved as far as the goal planning. We would want to be involved in regards to ensuring individuals are making progress. Working their treatment plan and getting the job, going to the job, providing all of those skills. And working them through the process to where now we're somebody who's maintained a job for a year. I've been working my behavioral health treatment plan for a year. Now let's start looking for available low income housing. Which comes into that, it butts right into the next problem of we, right now, don't have a ton of available low income housing. The governor did just put a ton of money into the Home Means Nevada. And attempts to spur a bunch of low income housing to be created. We'll see what comes from that. They haven't really issued, I think. For a public size who's won those awards yet, but that was really targeting the developer community. So we'll see what comes. Hopefully, hopefully some. Some increase in, in units, right? But I do think when it comes down to what makes supportive housing different than government projects is one, it needs to be run by community-based organizations. And it needs to have solid application eligibility process and then oversight. You have a lot of providers involved. In which case, when somebody falls off the track, you encourage them back on the track. And then you've got the, that clear line and expectation and what happens from there is on the individual. With a ton of help and aid, because we know, I mean, if you've ever. Worked with an individual who's lived homeless chronically for a really long time. It is a whole other skill set to learn how to manage a household. And it's not an easy skill set that just turns back on. Having to be responsible with paying bills, how you even get hookups set up. I mean, it's quite. It's quite the intensive process, helping somebody go from literal homeless chronically for years on end. Into what four walls and a roof looks like. So you've got to stick with them. And you've got to be able to provide those services and support so that way they can learn and transition and get back into what that looks like.
Mister Jacobson.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I, I agree with fellow commissioners on a lot of their comments. And appreciate your ladies' comments and presentation for sure. Few things I have. Did you say you're going to have another presentation for us down the road?
Well, we're gonna hope you approve our CDVG application and the September first meeting in September. Then you guys, yeah. So I mean, coming up, we'll talk more about the Corporation for Supportive Housing and what that needs assessment can do for us.
I think it would benefit the public in general and. Man, possibly our fellow commissioners too, if we had the representative from the school district in charge of the McKinney Vento. Join you and speak on that piece too, because the numbers, you know, three hundred and twenty-four in the schools. Yeah, I, I think that they would like to hear this from the school district on, on that, because that's where you're getting the numbers, I'm assuming.
For the school count, absolutely. And you know, Heather and I were having this conversation when we were reviewing the point in time count. We saw those numbers. And we're like, man, our McKinney Ventos have dropped off. So our school district since, I, I mean, COVID has impacted them so much. And the way that their referrals into us with that McKinney Vento, we used to have a really solid process. They'd process a McKinney Vento application. Then they'd get that family, get referred into us and so we'd be able to kind of track that. And that's dropped off. So we've got to get back in touch with them and figure out how we bring that back around so we can be more solid support system.
Right. And I think if they could provide some of the transency rates that they see in the schools, because Nevada is one of the highest in the country. That would benefit the ears as well. And I think some of those numbers may drop off, because just like transency and other things, they have transency at the school district. And the gal that was running the McKinney Vento and doing that was, in my opinion, gangbusters and she moved on to another job. And so whatever. So. And then I totally agree. I mean, these numbers, yeah, who's gonna, who's gonna make it in Ely in middle of February? I, I wrote that down and you touched on it, count in the warmer. They need to do the count in the warmer months. And that would benefit the, the outline too, to get a true indication of the number of homeless in those, in those counties. Because, uh, you know, Battle Mountain, Eureka, White Pine combined have two. Elko, Spring Creek, twenty, no way. I mean, they, so. I, I do think the numbers are skewed, especially for our outliers. I'm sure they're a lot higher than that. And then just a merit of, God, the mental health shortage of workers across the state is only going to get worse as they pass more and more of this stuff. I mean, so I, I know that's probably a hindrance for you as well. You touched on this as well, the new shelter in Reno, how's that doing? Do they have any open beds? I heard at one point that they weren't utilizing that as much as they thought they would.
Um, and from what I understand, they've got some new folks operating up there. I haven't heard an update in a few months. I know that the campus itself with the units filled out really quickly and they extended it to like warming shelters to try to provide additional help. But everybody that works with the CARES campus has nothing but golden reviews for it. They say that it's done a lot of good and that. What I understand Washoe County is also increasing the budget and going to be putting more, more investment into it to make it larger and be able to house more.
And so you said like eighty-four thousand people?
Shortage units.
Yeah, that'd be what, the fifth or sixth largest city in Nevada?
Eighty-four thousand. Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's, if you were to look at it by a population base, but that's eighty-four thousand units short in affordable housing. Is potentially multi, you know, homes like three people, four people, the average household, I think is that stated about is two point five.
Trying to digest that number. And then. You touched on where they were at, the Down by the River Hotels. And then do you count people living in trailers and trailer parks?
No, trailer parks, as long as they have hookups. So literally homeless means living somewhere not meant for human habitation. Which could be like the trailer off ninety-five. It's living there. It doesn't have hookups. It doesn't have electric. It doesn't have gas and they're not dumping their waste. So that individual is literally homeless. But if you are living in an RV park, which is hard because they have your requirements. They don't require, you know, they don't allow old RVs to come in and die there. So those super low income folks, parks aren't usually an option for them, but those aren't considered literally homeless.
But I think they might be in the recognized as school. So there might be some apples and oranges.
Yes.
In some of that as well.
McKinney Vito, McKinney Vito does not define homeless for youth the same. Defines homeless for adults.
So, and I think there's some trouble there with, so.
Yeah.
And then. I can't even read my own writing.
You're a school teacher.
I know. Should have been a doctor. And the last thing, I, I've just. Unless kids are involved, I really struggle with the drug problem. I, I, I'm probably the biggest coward in the room. I, I wouldn't try drugs if I was handed a bucket full of twenties and one unknown pill to take. I would pass on bucket of twenties. So my, unless kids are involved, I just, I just struggle with a drug problem and what it leads to. And, and the price that that costs us normal people. Working for a living or have worked for a living and, and the tax that that takes on, on our. Public and, and it bothers me. But I just wanted to say that so I could say it, but I'm, I'm less. I'm less sympathetic to those people unless, like I said, there's kids involved. So, thank you.
I absolutely hear you on it. Comes to the individuals with the drugs. I, the one thing that I do want to just. Throw out there for consideration that we pay for them with our tax dollars, one way or the other. When they overdose, we pay for them with our EMS. We pay for them with our emergency rooms. We pay for them with our jails. As, as much as it is aggravating and a frustrating battle. The positive side of that is if we can give them some hope and get them involved in treatment and get them working a program. We can reduce the costs elsewhere. You know, prevention's tough to prove, but I do think it works. So I wouldn't be in the, the field I'm in.
Thank you, ma'am chair.
Mister Hocke.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. Very depressing. I, I feel bad for the children that have no shelter. Basically, it's up to tent or they, the parents drag them out somewhere. And live in a car. So I definitely think they are a priority. It would be interesting to know if you get an honest answer to, hey, if you could go somewhere and be under a roof. Would you do it? Or just like the lifestyle of roaming around the countryside and living near a river? Don't know that you'd get an honest answer. I do know that when I taught school in Rapid City, South Dakota. We had a family there of several generations that were, they were called the million dollar family. Because it just went on and on. You know, the parents and the kids, and then the kids had kids and constantly paid for their. Homelessness, their treatment and everything else. So I would hope that we can stop some of those chains from happening. And so it looks like you're on the right track in many respects. I just. I think there's a lot of people out there that just don't want to have any rules. And, and I believe that because when we see these things in community development gets involved, it's because they pitch a tent. They pitch their trash everywhere. They're not healthy. And then they leave all their garbage and they leave. So not only are we giving them services, but then we have services after they leave by having to clean up. And basically have a, an unhealthy cleanup. So, you know, I appreciate everything you're doing, but I know it's a tough job.
Absolutely. We are working on trying to be creative in regards to the trash for our homeless and what that looks like. We do a lot of outreach with education on how you can live. If you're going to choose to live homeless and quite a few people will respond, yep, I've been homeless. I, I grew up homeless. I'll continue to be homeless. This is the way. A lot of folks that live in travel trailers don't consider themselves homeless and grew up that way and will continue to live that way. When it comes to the trash, we've been working with Andrew on some ways to try to work around or how we can aid individuals choosing to live homeless. We pass out trash bags, but then you run into the issue with it's illegal for them to dump their trash anywhere. And you can't take your trash bag and dump it in the dumpster at the grocery store. So we're trying to work on some of those things on that. And then human waste, we'll try to tackle next. But a lot of that comes into education and providing them the right supports. If you're going to choose to live homeless, here's how you can. If not. You gotta move on. It's not illegal to be homeless, but we certainly want to try to, like I said, work it from both ends. For those that want to be housed, how do we get them units? For those that want to live homeless, how can you live without impacting your house neighbors? And then how do we continue to push both forward?
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your precious time.
Appreciate it.
Job ladies.
Okay, number nineteen, agenda requests, administrative policies and procedures, one point zero five. A commission member or elected appointed department head may request an item. Be considered on a future agenda either by making an oral request at a county commission meeting. Or submitting the request in writing to the county manager at least thirty days prior to the meeting. For which the item is requested to be placed on the agenda. Jeff's not in here. Steve, are you gonna talk? Oh, well, you got up. I was putting you on the spot. He got up, right? Anyways, I don't know if Jeff needed to speak on that or if he just wanted that red end is that's the way it's done.
I think that's just the way it's done. This is our normal agenda item where we request.
Well, normally he just puts a gender request, but he put all the language in, so.
Yeah, I know. I think they're getting frustrated with us being, asking for the next meeting.
Us. He's only pointing his fingers at you anyways. Just joking.
That's not true.
Anyways, agenda request. I will start on my right. Commissioner Henderson.
Not at this time, ma'am. Thank you.
Mister Gray.
Yeah, I would like an update on the lands bill where it stands.
Your microphone, please.
Like an update on the lands bill. It was a long time ago that we gave direction. Staffs are putting it together and like to hear where we are and what timeline is for finalizing it, getting it up for Codel.
Okay. Commissioner Hockaday.
I will be requesting the. Adaptive fire program. Kelly Neville's will be presenter. So I'll probably get that on the agenda as soon as it can.
You mentioned that earlier. Yes. Okay, Commissioner Jacobson.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am chair. Just to. See where we're at with the invitation that we extended hopefully to TCID and Bureau of Reclamation on the Canal Project in Fernley. And then. Or Matt regarding geothermal activity drilling in and around Lyon County presentation. And that's it. Thank you, ma'am chair.
Okay, I don't think I have anything as of today. So going back through commissioner comments, we'll start with Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Just a shout out to the four H folks at the county fair. Wish them all well. Hope they sell their animals for a top dollar. And Erin, thank you for getting all but one cab down to one, I believe, in compliance. Well done. You got. You did a fine job there and we appreciate it and. See you all in September. No, tonight. Tonight, September.
Are you trying to confuse us? Anyways, Commissioner Hawkeye.
Well, first of all, the county fair is happening today until Sunday. Also wanted to thank our community development director. Andrew Haskin for all of his help on some constituent permit issues. And definitely resolution of questions and things that have to do with building permits and. And the restrictions there involved. Also, I definitely support Commissioner Henderson's. Request about highway funds and getting the county involved and getting more grants since there's billions sitting out there. We need to get our money from the feds and make sure that we get some of our roads repaired and straightened out. And, and a safer configuration. So again, thank you, Wes, for bringing that up this morning and let's get on some of these funds.
Mister Gray.
You come back. I had something earlier. I'm trying to remember what it was.
Commissioner Henderson.
I don't think you should get a second night. Thank you, ma'am chair. Not much. Just, just want to note that the first meeting in September, I will be on Zoom. I will not be here. I will be close to a body of water, whether it's the Atlantic or the Gulf of Mexico. I'm not sure yet. But I will be next to one of those. I'm leaving Sunday to go help take care of my sister who is recovering very well. From her leukemia and I'm gonna attack the next week on and go raise hell with my cousins. So, but I will be zooming in if the internet is, is working.
I'm heading during commissioner comments.
Train that left the station?
Well, it was an hour ago, so.
Uh, anyways, I just want to say thank you to all of staff today and also. It didn't get said earlier, but I do want to thank Commissioner Gray for his service to this board as chairman. For the past, was it eight months? Is that right? Past eight months and. Not that you need it. Wish you luck in the election in November. So, and I want to say thank you and congratulations to our new vice chairman. I don't think that got mentioned earlier either. So. Vice Chairman Hawkeye, you get, get, get your feet wet until January, then everything changes. Anyways, I want to thank the rest of my board as well that, you know, I think we had a good meeting today. Good discussion, a lot of good ideas. So with that being said, oh, do we have a closed session?
I'm sure the train came back from the station.
Okay, I'll let you.
I think Rob will appreciate this. Dayton meets Urrington tonight. Season opener football. Wishing Dayton luck. It ain't gonna happen, but you know, hey, who's, uh, who does firmly play next?
You know, I don't know. They've been going, I think they play a California school usually to start. So I'm, I'm not sure. I haven't even looked at the schedule.
Oh, come on.
I know. I'm a bum.
Well, good luck to them.
I apologize. So, alright.
Do we have a closed session? Thank God.
Come on, why stop the fun?
We got another meeting tonight.
Fun Chuck, continue.
Okay, so we're gonna go to our last public participation. So anybody for public participation for anything that wasn't on today's agenda. Mary Ann, you have the floor.
Okay, I just wanted to mention that the Lyon County Republican Central Committee. Has a booth at the fair.
Can I get you to state your full name for the record?
Oh, Mary Ann C. Jack. From Sage Coach. And as I said, the LCRCC has a booth at the fair. And there is always room for any candidate or any public official. Who wants to spend, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes in our booth to be able to have a. An opportunity to talk to the, to the people who come through. You're very, very welcome to come. To the Republican booth. We have free water. And just a welcome for, for any of you who would like to be there. Another comment I would like to make, and this was on the agenda, but I didn't get a chance to say anything was. Was Shayla's. Comments in her report. When I was reading the agenda, I, it made me. Angry to think that, that possibly money was being spent. To enable people to not take responsibility for themselves. And I see that, you know, from what I've heard, that is definitely not the case, but I think that. You know, the county is doing a wonderful job, but I think it takes more than the county. It takes the county, it takes the city, it takes the state. And the community is also concerned. It's not just the officials that are concerned about it. The community is also, and I think Shayla said she has a, a presentation on the December first meeting. Or the meeting in, in December first. And I think that. The, the county has been putting out little blurbs on Facebook. That have been really helpful about what's going on and what's happening. And if that could be. Put on, on Facebook as well and other sites that you have to let the community know that that's coming up and. And they need to, the community needs to be better informed about what was, goes on and what breaks my heart is thinking of these kids. That are growing up in this kind of a situation and then. Not getting the opportunity to do, to make the most of their lives, the way many of us have had wonderful opportunities to do that. And they just, you know, fit into the cycle. So please help the community. Be educated and, and be able to contribute where they can.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Hey, anybody else for public participation? Not seeing any hands. It is. Oh, is Cowboy Josh got public? Okay, it's two sixteen and his meeting is adjourned.